Greetings and welcome to the Saco City Council meeting for Monday, January 4th, 2021. Happy New Year to all. At this moment, call the meeting to order at 6:30 PM. We have a large agenda tonight, so I'll be moving very quickly. With that, let the record show that all of the councilors are present, including the city administrator. And with that, I'd like to invite everybody to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. The flag, as always, is behind city administrator Canrath. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, everyone. Under general, just as a general comment, there will be no executive session tonight. Moving on to item five, committee correspondence to council. Any committee correspondents at this time? Seeing no committee correspondence at this time, we move on to item six of the agenda, public comment. At this time, city administrator Canrath, have we received any public comments for tonight's meeting?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have one piece I'll read into the record now.
Thank you.
This comes to us from Victoria Frankel of 126 Flag Pond Road. Shreit, hello and happy new year. My name is Victoria Frankel. I've lived at 126 Flag Pond Road for about a year and a half. I had a couple of thoughts I wanted to bring to your attention in regard to the industrial zoning behind my neighborhood. I did try to educate myself a little bit, but I will say I'm pretty ignorant about things like city planning. I looked at older versions of the map, and it looks like that area has been zoned for industrial use for a long time. I also read in some prior meeting notes that many residents voiced concerns about different areas along Portland Road being zoned for residential use, which I do understand. My concerns with the area behind my neighborhood being built up for industrial use are as follows. First, the potential increase in noise and air pollution that already exists on all sides of the neighborhood, Portland Road on one side, I-95 on the other, as well as heavy commuter traffic on Flag Pond Road. Second, potential decrease in property values in the neighborhood depending on what the land would be used for. And third, displacement of wildlife protection and protection of our waterways, including Cascade Brook. All of that said, maybe there are worse things than industrial buildings. I don't know the best answer, but I don't, and I don't know if my neighbors have the same concerns. I'd love to see that land be for public use if I had my way, but from what I can tell, someone has been trying to sell up. If we have to build there, I'd rather see something for the residents of Saco than industrial buildings. Thank you for your time. Wish you a happy and healthy 2021. Victoria Frankel. Mr. Mayor, Isabel Exley in our planning department also has two additional pieces of public comment. If you'd like to take those now, or they can be held until the agenda item on the zoning ordinance revision.
Are they both related to the zoning ordinance revision?
They are. I believe they are, yes.
Then why don't we wait till the public comment on the zoning ordinance revision?
Okay. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to invite any members of the public that are on that would like to speak to the council. Please use the raise hand feature of the Zoom platform, or if you're calling in from a cellular phone, that is, star nine, that will raise your hands, that you can be unmuted to speak to the council. Again, for anyone wishing to speak to the council during public comment, please use the raise hand feature of the Zoom platform or star nine, and you'll be unmuted. We ask that you state your name, your address, and keep your comments to three minutes. Again, first up, we have a hand raised by Kelly Archer. Kelly, you've been allowed to speak. Go ahead and unmute and provide your name, address for the council. Okay, while we're dealing with that technical difficulty, we're going to go on to the next hand up, which the marker on the Zoom platform is DZ. You're going to be allowed to speak. Again, please state your name, your address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Good evening. It's Kathleen Jajo, and I had sent in a written statement. I was a little late coming into this meeting. I don't know if it's already been read. If it has, Kathleen Jajo, 15 Plymouth Drive, Saco, Maine. If it hasn't already been read, then I guess I would like to present it. It also has to do with the new zoning laws.
Kathleen, it has not been read, so if it is your intention on reading it, feel free to do so. Again, just please stick to three minutes.
I don't think it'll take longer. After reading the new zoning ordinances, I Googled the definition of low-density residential, and the result was this definition. The low-density residential land use category is intended to encourage single-family attached and detached residents typical in a suburban area to be served by public water and sewer. Saco's LDR zone has been expanded to include two-family homes, which is not low-density residential. When Plymouth Settlement was developed, the neighborhood could consist only of single-family homes. The city insisted on it at that time. The land sold at a premium based on these assurances, and those who purchased and built were told that this was the case. The city now to change without input from residents is not acceptable. Not only do these new ordinances suggest that two-family residents can be built, but provisions are made for multiple two-family residents on one lot with some caveats. Beyond that, also permitted is the construction of an ADU, which is a separate living unit either attached or detached from the dwelling, not to exceed 800 square feet. According to my calculations, this will enable a one-acre lot on city sewage to accommodate up to possibly six dwelling units, which in no way qualifies as low-density residential. So I'll stop it there. When I contacted the city to express my concern, I was informed that these changes were being made because the city supports two-family dwellings in the LDR. This is an anti-sprawl measure. Who made this determination? Was it put before the voters or residents? If not, I suggest that it should be before the statement is made that the city supports anything. The city staff is supposed to work for the residents, not dictate policy without input. I'm asking the city council not to approve drastic changes to existing zoning without putting it to a vote by residents. To do otherwise is not equitable. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. We're going to try Kelly Archer again. Kelly, you've been allowed to speak. Go ahead and unmute.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Okay, thank you so very much. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I am Kelly Archer of 185 Bradley Street. I am the chair of the Saco Historic Preservation Commission and a member of the ZOR's zoning ordinance revision steering committee. Both are sworn positions, mayor-appointed and council-approved, and I deeply recognize the extreme importance of boards and committee council liaison appointments, which is action item B on page 346 in your council packet. Mr. Mayor, I respectfully and from my heart in speaking directly to you, as you are the only one who appoints, and I'm very perplexed and extremely disheartened with the removal of the following councils, councilors, Marshall Archer, Chamber of Commerce, Joe Gunn, Capital Planning, and Nathan Johnston of the Planning Board, from their liaison appointments a year after their appointment by you. I would definitely understand if they chose to leave their appointments and move on. However, how does it benefit the city of Saco to remove them from the very great work they bring to their respective boards and commissions and the relationships they are forming to abruptly remove them without notice or conversation with the chair or its members of those boards or commissions? Where is the due process transparency and fairness for all to understand? Why aren't directed questions of you being answered, and why were they removed? What is your sound reasoning to do this at this particular time, especially with the comp plan and long-range planning committee and the planning board and the ZOR's issues that are before us? I would also comment on my personal working ZOR's planning board relationship with council, councillor liaison Nathan Johnston over the last 27 months. As the planning board chair, Don Gerards, stated so eloquently at your last meeting, Nathan is invaluable to the planning board, to the comp plans, to the long-range planning for the city of Saco, especially now. Especially now, I have to keep saying that, too much is going on. We need to have his continued participation. His tenacity, dedication, and commitment to the soul of Saco planning is to be rewarded, not penalized to the detriment of the city of Saco's vision of today and our future. You are silencing a much-needed voice. I compel you to reconsider, or at least at the very least, decide that those councilors you chose to replace, the three councilors I mentioned, allow both of them to work together, to sit together on these boards and commission until December 21, so the replacements, councilors can benefit from their knowledge and their relationships. And it would be a very, I think it would be a very good process if they do have to leave those positions. And as a citizen of Saco, I do expect answers to any of my direct questions from elected officials, city staff, and appointed members of boards and commissions. I look forward to hearing your just reasons for the removal of three councilors from their liaison appointments. And again, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you for allowing me to point this out to you, because you truly are the only one who does the appointments, so I needed to, I needed to voice this to you. Thank you very much for hearing me, and I hope you reconsider and possibly have a senior and junior liaison to these commissions. I think it would benefit the city of Saco if that's what is needed. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Kelly. Up next, we have phone number 207-286-6933. You've been allowed to unmute. Go ahead and unmute. Please state your name, address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Amber Emerson, and I am the resident of 252 Bradley Street, which is right next to the proposed Flately compound. So the reason why I've joined the meeting this afternoon is that prior to COVID, this had come up as a proposal, and the entrance for this very large compound was proposed to be set up off of Lincoln Street. And so all of a sudden, I see paperwork now here this year in which the proposed exit is now onto Route 5, which would be right next to my driveway. My driveway would be the next one before or after said entrance. And so we're just curious as to why this choice was made. It doesn't seem, when you're looking at the map, like a very fiscally responsible choice to make a road that long. I do have concerns about my property value, being that I do have a large, beautiful property here next door. I am also concerned about the noise that could increase through my backyard, as if you take a look at the dip in the road there, it shows that it comes awfully close to our property line there in the back. So we are a little concerned with this proposed plan. We had not put forth any objection to the prior plan. You know, this is a really, really big change in our backyard, and we would like to know why all of a sudden it's also going to be a change to our front yard.
Okay, thank you. Are you finished?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other public comment? A couple more hands. Folks, just FYI, if you're raising your hand to speak about the zoning ordinance revision, you may want to wait until we get to the action item, which is a public hearing, item A, on the zoning ordinance revision, so that it can be part of the, part of the record for that, for that action item. But any other public comment at this time? Again, for those on, please raise your hand using the raise hand feature, or star nine, and you'll be unmuted to speak to the council. Next up, we have Jessica Morris. Jessica, you've been allowed to speak. Go ahead and unmute. State your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, my name is Jessica Morris, and I reside at 17 Elm Street. I'm calling to just kind of quickly say, like, I'm disappointed that councillor Johnston is being removed from the planning board. I mean, I know, all opinions aside, in the end, you have the choice, Phil, to do this, and it's something that he's super invested in. I mean, if you were in my house and you saw my kitchen table, it's just notebook after notebook of notes, you know, diagrams, you know, everything he has printed off. He cares so much about this, and he invests so much time and passion for it. And to just see where someone has the power to pick someone, I can only imagine if, say, this were the former mayor doing this. Like, it just, you know, I'm sure somebody else would be great also, but it, like, I don't know, it just seems super shady, and I think that he deserves to finish the term he was appointed to. And yeah, I just want to say, I don't feel okay with that, and it's something he cares to do, and I think we deserve at least an explanation or a change of viewpoint. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Jessica. Up next, we have attendee identified by JC. JC, you're allowed to speak. Go ahead and unmute. State your name and address for the record.
Hello, yes. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Jane Karen, 264 Lincoln Street in Saco, and I appreciate Kelly Archer's comments as well as Jessica's. I have been on Zoom meetings, and Nathan Johnston has been a very positive part of the planning board. I've appreciated his work, all the work that he's been doing. So certainly, there is a lot of support for him on the planning board. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Jane. Okay, any other public comment? Last call for public comment. Okay, moving on to item seven of the agenda, approval of minutes for December 7th and December 14th, 2020. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to approve.
Councillor Mintorn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Gunn. Any issues with the minutes? Roll call, vote on the minutes. Councillor Archer?
Aye.
Councillor Purdy?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Berman?
Yes.
Councillor Mintorn?
Yes.
Councillor McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Johnston?
No.
Motion passes 6-1. Moving on to consent items, which is item eight of the agenda. We have four items. Item A, confirm mayor's appointments of the long-range planning committee. Item B, confirm mayor's appointments to benefit for Saco Old Orchard Beach Transit Authority of Amanda Chen's. C, confirm mayor's reappointment of George Chase to the zoning Board of Appeals. And D, combine massage therapist and establishment license, Wheelie Lou doing business as Healing Touch Massage. Is there anyone who, is there any of these items that anyone would like to pull from the consent agenda item and discuss inaction items? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as proposed?
So moved.
Councillor Mintorn, is there a second?
Second.
Second by councillor Berman. Discussion on the consent agenda items. Hearing no discussion and seeing no councillors seeking recognition, roll call, vote. Councillor Archer?
Aye.
Councillor Purdy?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Berman?
Yes.
Councillor Mintorn?
Yes.
Councillor McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. We are now at item nine, which is action items. We are at item A, a public hearing, amendments to the zoning ordinance, zoning map, site plan review ordinance, subdivision ordinance for January 4th, 2021. Councillor Johnston?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Beginning in October 2018, the city of Saco established a zoning ordinance revision committee that began working with city staff and consultants on a comprehensive zoning ordinance revision. After extensive public outreach, public meetings, work sessions, a new zoning ordinance, zoning map, site plan, and subdivision ordinance were developed. City council held a public hearing on these ordinances and the zoning map on November 4th, 2019. After hearing from the public and recognizing that additional areas needed to be addressed, the city council voted to send the zoning ordinance, zoning map, site plan, and subdivision ordinance back to the planning board for the review. Planning board and the zoning ordinance revision steering committee then continued working together at workshops and planning board meetings to work through additional drafts of the revised zoning ordinance, zoning map, subdivision, and site plan ordinance and city staff. Public hearing was held on October 20th, 2020, and it was decided to continue that public hearing through December 1st, 2020, when the public hearing was then closed. Planning board voted unanimously after December 1st, 2020, meaning to approve the planning board report, to submit that report to the city council, and voted unanimously to approve the zoning ordinance, site plan, and subdivision ordinances and zoning map, and send the city council, and send to the city council for further review. City council accepted the planning board report at December 14th, 2020 meeting, and held the first reading and set the public hearing for January 4th, 2021. At their December 14th, 2020 meeting, a legal notification of the public hearing and the zoning map were mailed to all residents of Saco and postmarked December 16th, 2020. Legal notification was also published in the Press Herald on December 17th, 2020, and the 24th, December 2020. Mayor and council are advised there are some inconsistencies between the 2011 comprehensive plan and the new zoning ordinance as voted upon by the planning board. The R5 MU, currently the MU4 zone, was removed from the zoning ordinance. The used master plan developments were also removed from both the R5 MU and the Portland Road districts within the zoning ordinance. Certain LDR parcels be zoned to industrial to allow access to industrial arts or back parcels. Reference Exhibit 6 and 7 from the city planner Bob Hamlin and attorney Jim Katavikis' memos. Staff recommends that the city council conduct a public hearing on the zoning ordinance, site plan, and subdivision ordinances, and zoning map this evening, January 4th, 2021. Staff recommends that once the public hearing is closed, the council consider the changes recommended in Exhibit 8, 9, and 10, and give guidance to direct city staff in consultation with legal counsel to prepare any language needed to amend the draft zoning ordinance to incorporate some or all of those changes. Staff also recognizes that public comments and city council discussion after public hearing may result in additional potential changes, and therefore recommends that the city council give guidance to direct city staff in consultation with legal counsel to prepare any language needed to amend the draft zoning ordinance to incorporate some or all of those changes. The final zoning ordinance, zoning map, site plan review ordinance, and subdivision ordinances come before the city council for a final vote and approval with amendments, if any, at the city council January 11th, 2021 meeting. Note that all motions herein have been reviewed by attorney James Katavikis and are ready to be taken up for action at the city council meeting. I move to open the public hearing on the zoning ordinances, site plan, and subdivision ordinances, and zoning map this evening, January 4th, 2021.
Second?
Motion's been made by councillor Johnston, second by councillor Mintorn, to open the public hearing on the ZOR, the ZOR change. Any discussion on opening the public hearing? Seeing no councillor seeking recognition, roll call, vote on opening the public hearing. Councillor Archer?
Aye.
Councillor Purdy?
Yes.
Councillor Gunn?
Yes.
Councillor Berman?
Yes.
Councillor Mintorn?
Yes.
Councillor McPhail?
Yes.
Councillor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-0. The public hearing is now open at 6:57 PM. City administrator Canrath, you had, or is, you had two items that you were going to read into the record, or was Isabel going to read those?
Yeah, so, Mr. Mayor, there are two additional items. Isabel Exley, our planning associate, has those items. If she could proceed with reading those to the record.
Thank you. Isabel, welcome. Thank you for joining us whenever you're ready.
All right, thanks for having me. So the first one I'm going to read is from Anthony Armstrong. It reads, Dear Mayor Doyle and members of the city council, I am a real estate broker for the Gordon P. O'Donnell Living Trust, the trust which owns approximately 40 acres of adjoining property on Portland Road and Cascade Road, currently in the B6 and the B2A zones. These properties have been on the market for approximately two years. I have been following the progress of rezoning in the area for the past 15 months. The zoning ordinance review committee and the planning board have put an enormous amount of time into their review of the land use ordinances in Saco. I compliment them on the progress that has been made to date. I strongly believe, however, that they have ended up with the wrong conclusion as relates to the proposed residential zoning in the Cascade Road area currently zoned B2A. First, there is no proposal to use master plan provisions. Most of the land of the trust runs on Cascade Road, which is largely residential and will likely develop as residential. The planning board ought to be given flexibility to utilize master plan provisions as related to housing development in this area. This will allow for the most creative and beneficial result for the community. Second, the proposed ordinance creates a multi-unit residential project use, which is defined on page 220 of the draft as follows. A residential development consisting of three or more dwelling units in which the buildings are designed and constructed as part of the overall development. The distinguishing characteristic of a multi-unit residential project is that it is designed and developed with a common, consistent architectural style. The dwelling units in a multi-unit residential project may be in single-family dwellings, two-family dwellings, or multifamily dwellings, or any combination thereof, and may be located on a single lot or on multiple lots. This provision makes a great deal of sense in permitting larger residential projects by allowing creative, interesting site plans in combination with the master plan provisions. Yet this use is neither a permitted or conditional use, nor is it eligible for consideration under the master plan provisions as relates to the Portland Road zone. I can recall no detailed comment on the record to date, to date, to justify this limitation as proposed. It seems counterproductive to good planning. Third, the planning board is recommending a density, square foot of land per dwelling unit, of 7,500 square feet for multifamily units on sewer in this area. We think 5,000 square feet is more reasonable, given that the property is near a public sewer. the high cost of developing raw land, and the desire to keep housing affordable. The proposed densities in this area also call for 30,000 square feet for single-family homes on sewer. This is greater than other areas in the city which are on sewer. A more reasonable provision would be 20,000 square feet. These density proposals are also consistent and fairly aligned with what is allowed for similar property in the Chamberlain Homes Contract Zone area further north and further away from the downtown of Saco. I appreciate your consideration of these issues, respectfully, Anthony Armstrong. And then I do have one more. This one is from Erin Shields. It was actually directed to Bob and Denise, but was requested for, to be put in this public comment section as well. So it says, Hi, Bob and Denise, I can't make tonight's meeting work, but I have a question that maybe you can help me with. I see that the zoning ordinance has multifamily dwellings, three or more attached, and then multi-unit residential projects as two different uses. In the past, I have asked about allowing multiple single-family homes, a subdivision, that could be located on one lot, and the ownership would be condominium-style of ownership, i.e. house-o-miniums. These wouldn't be multifamily homes as they would be individual homes, and they would be reviewed as a multi-unit residential project. Still a single-family development, but with all homes located on one lot, they would have the common elements of land and ownership, and the roads would be maintained by an HOA and not by the city. In the end, the density wouldn't or couldn't exceed what is allowed in the zone, but the homes could be closer together with shorter roads and are far more attractive to empty nesters and/or retired buyers, which are needed in the city of Saco. The only issue is that your zoning tables still don't allow multi-unit residential projects in all residential zones. Can someone explain why not, or how do we get this issue in front of the city council for consideration? Dating back a decade, the city has had issues with affordable homes for its aging population and has complained about the miles of new city streets that are built as part of a single-family development. Allowing multi-unit residential projects in the zones west of the Turnpike help with both these problems, and they don't add overall parcel density. And because you define them differently in the allowed use charge, you won't be allowing multifamily dwellings at the same time. Please advise, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Isabel. With that, open the, open the comment here. For anyone that is interested in speaking to the city council on item 9A, the ZOR public hearing, please use the raise hand feature of the Zoom platform or star nine if you're calling on a cellular phone, and you'll be unmuted to deliver your remarks to the city council. Again, just please state your name, your address for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak. First up is Maria Firstenberg. Maria, you've been allowed to speak. Go ahead and unmute and provide your comments to the council. Again, state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Maria Firstenberg from TRC, located in Scarborough, Maine. We're actually representing Blue Wave Solar and their landowner. We had provided comments to the planning board on a couple of occasions regarding the lot at MAP 87 Lot 1 in Saco. That lot is currently zoned in the low-density residential zone, and the proposed zoning ordinance puts it into a zone that does not allow solar development, which is, the landowner and Blue Wave have been working together to plan for quite some time now. So the request that we submitted to the planning board and then also to you councillors is to modify the district slightly to include our parcel in a zone that will allow for solar. Both Alan Robertson from Blue Wave and the landowner, Linda Fenderson, are on the call tonight and would like to speak more about that. So if it's all right, I would like to turn it over to them.
Maria, are you finished with your comments?
Yes, unless Alan or Linda request.
I see Linda is already on, under a different name, or under Linda Fenderson, identified as an attendee. So I will get, she's about six people down, I will get her comments in as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Up next is Don Gerard. Don, you've been allowed to speak. Go ahead and unmute. Please state your name and address for the record. And you have three minutes.
Mayor and members of the council, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
All right, thank you very much. What I'd like to do at this point is, one of our planning board members was unable to attend this public hearing tonight because of a loss of a family of a loved one. And what he would like to do is reflect what he sent to me as an email that he would write to have me relate to you relative to the comments about the planning or the zoning ordinance amendments that are being proposed this evening. And so this is from Jeff Broschu, 257 Buxton Road. He's a member of the planning board. He would, his statement is as follows. I'd like to thank and recognize the incredible effort of all the planning board, ZOR members, and city staff that carried this document through some very long discussions to bring it through the process that created the document before you this evening. These new documents are not perfect and will ultimately be a need to continue to be improved upon. They are, however, a much more user-friendly and functional set of documents for applicants, staff, and the planning board to use when evaluating plans as they pass through the planning department processes. The reduction in the number of zoning districts, for example, is a huge step in simplifying the process. As the planning board and the ZOR listened to several public hearings on these matters, it was clear that there is, are, and are, some areas of the cities, citizens of Saco want to see a different direction taken regarding future development. The planning board listened, evaluated, and made proposed changes that were more in line with what the community was asking for, as well as recollected the intent of previous comprehensive plan and zoning revision groups had intended. We are fortunate to have a few members who have been serving our community long enough, have been on several update groups, and can provide this history. The council will most probably hear how some of the proposed changes will be in conflict between the proposed zoning ordinances and the comprehensive plan, which could result in a legal situation if challenged. I would hope that each member of the council will give this some serious consideration and choose a path to allow the city to retain control of its development paths beyond moving forward. This may mean having the zoning update and the comprehensive plans being updated simultaneously. Or another option, I would encourage you all to hear taxpayers and regain control of our future planning and development in a way that is not constantly being challenged or driven by fear of legal action. I would ask you to consider whether where an issue of changing the zoning district from one of higher density to the zoning of a lower-density district that currently surrounds it is a conflict between the zoning and comprehensive plan. If so, would the call for more affordable housing and requiring the additional installation of residential sprinkler systems be challenged if the same way? Please be bold and do what is best for the city. These documents are supposed to help guide the city to thoughtful and well-planned development. Respectfully, Jeff Broschu, member of the planning board. Thank you, Mayor and members of the council, for allowing me to introduce this to the record.
Thank you, Don. Up next, we have Don Pylon. Don, you've been allowed to, allowed to speak. Go ahead and unmute. State your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Mr. Mayor?
We can hear you.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, are we discussing tonight the, only the the ordinance on sprinklers? Or is this open to, are we, can we talk about the comprehensive plan as well?
This is only related to item 9A, which is a public hearing on the zoning ordinance, zoning map, site plan review ordinance, subdivision ordinance for January 4th, 2021.
So are we talking about that? Let me ask you the question again. Is this only about sprinkler systems in the unprotected areas of town?
This is not, this is not specific to sprinkler systems. This is the entire ZOR's process.
Okay, thank you. My question and my comments pertain to the area on Industrial Park Road between North Street and the I-95 Spur. The new zoning indicates that it's a, I believe, a B1 zone. Is that correct, Mr. Hamlin?
This is public comment. This is not a question and answer session.
Okay. That area of town, I believe, has been rezoned from an I-zone to a B1 zone, which now you can have an eating establishment down there. My office is on the corner of North Street and Industrial Park Road. Many of the people that work in my office have asked me why there are, why there are no eating establishments. We can't go anywhere to get a cup of coffee. We can't go anywhere to get something to eat. We have to leave the office and go up on Route 1 to get something to eat. Why aren't there any places on that, that piece of road between North Street and the Spur to get something to eat? And so I did approach Denise Clavett and ask why we couldn't get a Dunkin' Donuts down there. She advised me to do something, to talk to the people along Industrial Park Road, see if there was a need for that, which I did, and presented a petition from people in that area. And there was a demand, there was a need for that. I have a client that's interested in putting a drive-through operation there, but that B1 zone does not allow for a drive-through. Does give you a restaurant, but no drive-through. I'd like the council to consider allowing a restaurant with a drive-through window. And especially in the COVID, in the COVID environment that we're in, no one goes into restaurants anymore. And if you look at the operations, the restaurants on Main Street, Kentucky Fried Chicken, McDonald's, Wendy's, they're all drive-through operations today. And restaurants today need drive-through windows. And I would urge you to allow in that B1 zone a drive-through window, especially in this COVID environment that we're living in today. So I don't know how you go about that, but I would suggest in that B1 zone that you consider allowing drive-through, especially, as I mentioned, and I don't want to be redundant, this environment, the COVID environment that we're living today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is John Turcot. John, you've been allowed to speak. Go ahead and unmute and present your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, city councillors. My name's John Turcot, and I'm an attorney. My office is in South Portland. I represent the Gordon P. O'Donnell Living Trust, and the trust and its entities, including Cascade, Flea Market, own property that's in what would be the proposed Portland Road District. That's, they own properties, among other things, at 885 Main Street and 923 US Route 1. Presently, the properties that it owns are in the B2A, which is the Highway Business District, and B6, which is the Highway Business Commercial District. And my client is concerned about what appears to be a gap in the permitted and conditional uses in the proposed PR district. And so it's asked me to attend tonight. I did send a letter earlier, but it doesn't look like you received it. So the PR district stated purpose provides that residential development is intended to be of urban character with a goal of high-quality multifamily residential uses. And toward that end, both multifamily dwellings of three to eight units and multifamily dwellings of more than eight units are proposed to be conditional uses in that district. However, multi-unit residential products aren't included as a use at all. And therefore, the proposal before you is that this would be a non-permitted use, and that's on your table 3-3. Because the definition of those permitted multifamily dwellings, by definition, contemplates the units must be within a building. It appears that by that language, that, for example, a 30-unit apartment building would be permissible. But if my client were to propose a plan involving townhouse-style condominium units, for example, that would not be permitted. And we, my client kind of feels that's a puzzling omission, given the stated goals and the purpose of the district. We did present that item, along with some of the density requirements and other items, to the planning board. And let me just say from the get-go that the planning board just really did a heroic effort to do all of that work and bringing it here before you. And a lot of the changes we requested and issues we discussed involving density did make it into a version that is before you tonight. But we never really got a straight answer or the reasoning behind the omission of the multi-unit residential projects. And therefore, the trust respectfully requests the council consider adding multi-unit residential projects as a conditional use within the Portland Road District. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. We now are with, we now have Linda Fenderson. Linda, you've been allowed to speak. Go ahead and unmute. State your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes. Linda, can you hear us?
Linda, we cannot hear you.
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was rattling on. My name is Linda Fenderson. You're Mr. Dickerson, right? I wanted to tell you that my husband, John, and I are right here. And we wrote a letter to councillor Archer and the Saco Planning Board. I thought maybe they would read it, but I guess they didn't, in regards to the Blue Wave Solar proposal for Fenderson Farm right up on Route 5 in Saco. It's where most people would know us from, it's 97 New County Road. My husband and I are in our 70s, are close to it. And we've tried our best to do everything right. We pay our taxes, we get our business license, we're a farm. We've been, we ran a farm this summer ourselves, and we kept everybody safe. We're getting older, so we thought maybe we needed to figure out another way to keep our property as well as farm, and just in case we couldn't do a big enough project to pay our taxes. And we thought Blue Solar Way was the answer to our prayers, and we've been working with them for quite some time now. Can you hear me all right?
We can hear you.
All right. Anyway, it's been a real struggle to run our farm this year because we gave up all our off-farm markets because we didn't think we could keep folks in control to keep our food safe from being handled or approaching us without a mask. And of course, we are very susceptible to the virus. So we lost a lot of business because people didn't get to do a hands-on approach. And we worked through a window, which made the whole process of getting the veggies much longer. And I worked on these for a few days. No one got sick on my watch. Before the virus, I attended a meeting in person. And I was assured at that time because I was concerned that you folks would change the zoning from farming and rural residential to something that would not allow our plans for a solar farm. And I believe it was, I don't think I have the date right because it was before the coronavirus, which was in April, I believe, when it started, right? Or March, February, March when it started. So it was somewhere in there. It wasn't the November fourth that I was thinking. I wasn't feeling good, I didn't get the right date. But I spoke to Mayor Lowell and maybe some of the planning board members. And I stood in front of the council there. And I, and I don't like to do that, and I don't like to do this, but I tried to make clear my concerns that for the new zoning, that we might not, we might put us at a higher tax bracket because we're a farm and also make us ineligible for the solar farm on our unused backfields that we were, we were in the process of getting. It was my understanding when I left that I would have nothing to worry about. That's what Lowell, is it Lowell? I don't know. Anyway, Mayor Lowell said, he said I had nothing to worry about. And I trusted the city to keep their word. And I guess now they've been trying to get this through, and they've been denied at some point in time or there's been some kind of delay. And this is why I wrote the letter, because you did make a promise. And this project will help the environment, and it'll help the local residents as well because it'll give a lower electricity to them. And you gave your word, and that ought to mean something. And I'm done. And Alan may have something to speak to. He's also probably on the, on your waiting list.
Okay, thank you, Linda.
Yeah, thank you.
Next up, we have Rand Clark. Rand, you've been allowed to speak. Go ahead and unmute. State your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Yes, hi. My name is Greg Schinberg at one eighty-one State Street in Portland. I represent Rand and Susan Clark. And the property in question, I guess the one thing I would ask is, we submitted some information to Denise Clavett with three exhibits and a short memo. Did you receive that? Hello?
I believe we have received that, Rand, or Greg. But there's been several emails that have been coming in. So if it was, if it's been something today, I'm sure it's in people's emails.
We sent it last week and then sent it again today. That was, so briefly, I have Rand and Susan Clark here with me. I'll be very brief, just to talk about what we're looking for. The property is located right at the intersection of the Flag Pond Road, where the house nearby is one forty-eight Flag Pond and the interstate, I ninety-five. And so we are asking the council to consider extending the industrial zone up to Flag Pond Road on three small parcels, which is about an acre and a half, just so that it's clear that if in the future somebody wants to develop that industrial land that's out back, they have clear access to Flag Pond. See, the main problem is, is that the large industrial zone, which is shown as purple on your revised zoning map, connects through to the industrial park from the other side of town, from the other side of the city, rather. But the Cascade Brook makes it virtually an infeasible idea to carry a road through there. So that industrial land, which has been pegged by the city staff, and I'll let Mr. Rand talk about that for a while, is really industrial land that should be clearly an industrial property. And I think that I'll kind of conclude by saying that well, there's just a couple of other things. The, if you were to be there on site, there's a natural tree line and an old tow road that is near where we're looking to have the industrial zone come up to the Flag Pond Road. So it's a very natural place to bring it in. And it just seems like it's a natural place to extend your industrial zone and change that small piece of residential. And again, it's about an acre and a half. Close calculation is about one point six acres into the industrial zone from a residential zone. So with that, I'm going to let Mr. Clark address the council.
Yes, please let us know if you need clarification on anything that Greg has said. My wife, Susan, and I are here. We own eight buildings in Saco. We have had a very good relationship with the city of Saco as we've renovated buildings. In fact, different ones from the city has thanked us a number of times for the improvements we've made to neighborhoods, as well as to individual buildings, some in the historic zone, in fact. And we have consulted with the city on this particular property. There's actually two pieces that we acquired twelve years ago. We consulted with the city before we purchased them for guidance and direction. And at their request, recently purchased an additional parcel that the city recommended that we purchase. So we're really just wanting to use the industrial land as it's zoned and want to, we think that developing it particularly along the turnpike is ideal because residential homes, that wouldn't be ideal for building residential homes there. So with that, you have details in your packets and certainly happy now or at another time to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Rand. Up next, we have Nancy Schuster. Nancy Schuster, you've been allowed to speak. Go ahead and unmute, state your name and address for the record. And you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This actually is Neil Schuster. I'm using my wife's Zoom account, so it shows up as Nancy. But Neil Schuster, four thirty-three Ferry Road. I just want to compliment everybody, the amount of work. I started out working on this project and have watched the project as it's moved along and am really amazed at the amount of energy, effort on the part of the planning board, the zoning ordinance review committee, city staff, for really putting together what is quite a much more workable zoning ordinance, zoning map, much clearer to be able to work with than what currently exists. The challenge now for the city council is you have a very difficult task. There is, as you've heard with the public comments and with all of the public comments that have come in to the planning board and to discussions with city staff, it's really now in your laps to make a final determination as to the revisions to be made to the zoning ordinance. And I think one of the key things is the letter that Don Gerard read from Jeff Broschu, where it's, this is, this is not going to be a perfect document. This becomes a starting point, there's been a lot of input. But it also becomes an ongoing workable document along the way is with all of the changes that have been made to the zoning ordinance over time. So again, I just compliments to all. And the work that you have in finalizing this, making decisions, will be a real challenge as well. So I look forward to it moving along. I do have a couple of com, just one comment or one concern. And that is with the potential for duplexes, for increasing density and the low-density residential and medium-density residential zones, with the addition of duplex housing becoming a permitted use in those areas, with the goal of increasing density. And I think today in the email that came with the updates from the city, good arguments were made for why that's a good thing for all of us as taxpayers in the city for, you know, increasing density, which decreases the amount of roads that get built, it consolidates, it gets people closer together, school buses, et cetera, et cetera. So I think overall, the concept's not bad. But my concern is with some of the unintended consequences of that change in use, and especially when it moves to a permitted use from a conditional use. And I think some of the arguments, you know, with in-law apartments or, you know, children being able to live on family property, all good arguments. My concern of the unintended consequences is with the proliferation of Airbnbs, VRBOs, et cetera, and the unregulated, really what I can just relate to is unregulated hotel business, which is occurring now in the city. And I know previous city councils have discussed Airbnbs and trying to regulate that and VRBOs, all of those types of, you know, sort of the new age rental types of properties. And previous city councils have just sort of kicked the can down the road in relationship to that. I think with what we've seen over the last nine months with COVID and with the increase in interest in buying properties in Saco, the proliferation of Airbnb properties, especially in the area. I live in Ferry, I'm down on Ferry Road, about a half mile from the beach. See these small homes, they go up for sale, two weeks later, they're sold. And then the following summer, they're Airbnbs with people coming and going all the time. And there's no regulation of that currently. So with the, with the duplexes as a permitted use, I think the unintended consequence of that is it can really potentially get out of control. In a minimum, I think with the, with the
Neil, I'm going to step in, you're past your three minutes, if you can wrap up, please.
Okay, I just think in a minimum, duplexes, that increase in density should be a conditional use. At least there's a little bit level of review. People in the surrounding neighborhoods would be more aware. But I think also the city council needs to put at the top of a future agenda, not part of this zoning ordinance review, but in the very near future, tackling the task of Airbnbs and VRBOs and regulating that somehow in the city of Saco. Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Next up is Philip Hatch. Mr. Hatch, you've been allowed to speak. Go ahead and unmute, state your name and address for the record. And you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. I'm Phil Hatch. I live at nineteen Evergreen Drive with my wife Lucy. We've been residents of Saco for thirty-five years. I submitted an email to the council members last Monday, which I believe you all have received. I asked it to be included in the public record, but I did send it a second time as the public hearing opened. So it is in the hands of City Administrator Keanrath and city councillors. I'm not going to read that, it's too long. I sent you a history of the evolution of the zoning ordinance process. I personally was involved in it, have been since May. I am going to read a couple of things from my submission. The document that you're looking at is a result of over two years of laborious work conducted by the mayor-appointed and city council-approved Zoning Ordinance Review Steering Committee, AZORS. I would ask you to reflect on and respect the many months of hard work that have been invested in this document. It's the culmination of numerous levels of professional scrutiny by planning department staff and hired land use planning and legal counsel. It's been thoroughly vetted by the Planning Board's ZORs Committee. It's been subjected to numerous public hearings during which the concerns and wishes of your voting constituency were respectfully considered and are reflected in many areas of the ordinance. My sincere hope is that you are all intent on making an informed and fair decision on behalf of the city of Saco property owners who make up your voting constituency. I also hope you will remain cognizant of the comments made by city attorney Tim Murphy at your December fourteenth meeting, in which he provided you with a very sound level of advice regarding how important it is to ethically administer your responsibilities to promote fairness, transparency, and proper due diligence when executing your duties as elected officials. I'm looking at the suggested motions that are in your agenda, item A. They seem to imply the potential for a breakdown in that process. You've contemplating allowing a seven-day window for changes to be made by department staff that will lack transparency, will lack public input, and potentially disregard all of the hard work that, or not all of it, but a large portion of the hard work that went into that document. So I would conclude by asking you to consider my suggestion in my email, that you approve the ordinance as presented. I agree with Planning Board member Jeff Broschu, who cited this as an ongoing working document. That term was used several times during the evolution of this proposed ordinance. And that you approve it as is and then theoretically figure out how you can get the new land, the comprehensive plan review with a long-range planning committee to review it and bring it in sync with the new comprehensive plan. By doing that, you will allow it to have some transparency. I'm assuming the due diligence and public input would be allowed in that process. And in all fairness, what should come out of that is a document that is worthy of your consideration. In my humble opinion, if you make a unilateral, non-transparent change decision this evening and allow just city council staff to make these modifications that you're contemplating, I think it would be contrary to the democratic process. You took an oath to defend. And a unilateral decision of this magnitude would also serve, I think, to neglect the sound advice that previously was provided to you by Attorney Murphy. Thank you, Mayor Doyle. And I respectfully submit those comments to you for the public record.
Thank you, Phil. Up next is identified as Anthony Armstrong. Anthony, you've been allowed to speak. Go ahead and unmute and then state your name and address for the record. And you have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, my name is Anthony Armstrong. I'm a real estate broker, also a lawyer, but I'm working as a real estate broker for SVN, the Urbana Coop in Portland, and representing the O'Donnell Living Trust, along with John Turcot. He's the attorney on this. And also I have a client on Cascade Road I want to mention something about as well. So I'll try to do this as quickly as possible. Basically, I'm concurring with what John Turcot said earlier in regard to the O'Donnell Trust properties. And the problem we're seeing here with not being able to use the multi-unit residential project defined in the definitions of the ordinance as a conditional permitted use in this zone, it doesn't make sense to us that you'd have a flexible product, a flexible option like this and then not be able to use it in one of the primary zones in the city. And the same thing with the master planning concept. It seems like those are two modern approaches that give the planning board flexibility to work creatively, creatively with developers to come up with the best projects, particularly residential projects. Other item that he didn't mention is, or he alluded to a little bit, but not in detail, is the density issue up there and along Portland. is the density issue up there and along Portland Road. I see the Cascade Road, Portland Road intersection area is different than a lot of Portland Road. A lot of the property the O'Donnell Trust owns is down along Cascade Road. It's not in the commercial area. It's off Portland Road. And to have it be swept up in the Portland Road zone is a little bit difficult. But one of the problems we're having is these density requirements you're setting, although improved since we started discussing it, you know, they're still at the contract zone that the Chamberlain Homes folks are operating half a mile north. They have a lot more density capability up there than we would have under the proposed 7,500 feet per unit ordinance that's contained here. So I would think the 5,000 square feet per dwelling unit would be a more creative way to treat the properties. So that's where I'm at on this particular property. One also thing I want to note, though, is it's been mentioned tonight about the COVID situation in fast food and drive-throughs. And I want to make sure that you guys, you folks, aren't limiting fast food and drive-throughs in the Portland Road zone at a time when things are changing. So you might want to look at that closely, and I'll try to look at it more closely. Switching scenes down to Ocean Park Road, that right now is a B2C zone. And the B2C and several other zones have a provision in the current ordinance which allow for double density for elderly and disability housing. And that, I have a client who owns property on his property that I've listed on Ocean Park Road. And that provision seems to, I think, have disappeared. I know it was discussed in detail with regard to the folks who have property down near the shopping center in the middle of town, but the provision that's available in the ordinance now in footnote 17 of table 401-2-1 of the current ordinance seems to have sort of disappeared. And I just want to make sure, I might have missed it in all the meetings I attended with the Planning Board and the AZORS committee, but I just want to make sure that it gets thoroughly discussed by the council because by changing the extra density allowances for elderly and disability housing, you're really making a major policy change at a time when it's pretty clear that senior housing is having a difficult time. And I just want to make sure that the city is on track with this. And maybe Chairman Gerard could comment to that at some point in the future, but at this point, I want to make sure that that's being looked at closely. And that's basically where I'm coming from at this point. And thank you very much. And I want to say that the Planning Board and the AZORS committee have done a yeoman's job in tearing apart this ordinance and putting it back together again. It's been quite a herculean process, and I certainly appreciate their efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony. Up next is Chris Nucci. Chris, you've been allowed to speak. Go ahead and unmute, state your name and address for the record, and present your comments to council. Three minutes, please.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Chris Nucci. My address is 11 Paul Avenue. I'm on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and we would like to propose that an amendment be made to the Review by Commissions section of the subdivision ordinance, section 402. Specifically, we'd like to request that a sentence be added stating that the Planning Board may invite comments from the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee as to the impact on bicycle and pedestrian access facilities and infrastructure. We feel that this would be a relevant addition in light of the council's goals for transportation and transit and livable communities found in the strategic direction plan for 2020 to 2023, as well as the transportation initiatives, section 3A, found in the comprehensive plan. And we feel that our voice would be helpful with any new plans to just ensure that they're being carried out in a way that takes into account bicycle and pedestrian safety and growth opportunities going forward. And that's pretty much it for me. I appreciate your consideration on this proposed amendment.
Thank you, Chris. Up next is Bill Zafferson. Billy, you've been allowed to speak. Go ahead and unmute and state your name and address for the record. Three minutes, please.
Mayor Doyle, thank you very much, Mayor Doyle and members of the council. My name is William Zafferson, and I live at 1 Cortland Circle. I've also been unanimously appointed the spokesperson by the Church Council of St. Demetrius Church, which is located at 186 Bradley Street. There are approximately 85 families that belong to the church that will reside here in Saco. There is a concern about the second suggested motion that is included on page 13 of your packet. This motion disregards the work that members of the AZORS and the Planning Board have undertaken over the past 18 months. From a memo in the city council packet, it appears the driver is that there is a perceived conflict with the city's comprehensive plan as it relates to reinstating the R5 MU district. I find it ironic that in today's City of Saco Pepperell Post newsletter that was emailed to me, it states that the city is beginning the comprehensive planning process for 2021. The stated goal is to ensure that the comprehensive plan is reflective of the community's character, needs, and desires. It appears that the Planning Board took these key elements into consideration in formulating their recommendations to you tonight. The suggested motion does not take into consideration the good work of the committees or the input from the public on multiple occasions. As a former chair of the city advisory committee myself, taking this action would cause me to question ever signing up for a committee that works to reach a consensus, polls the community, and then has its work disregarded. As it relates to the R5 MU district, the neighborhood has spoken quite loudly regarding this position, but this motion seems to take an alternative view. This is evidenced by a signed petition that I think has been presented to the city in which over 125 residents who live in that particular area have objected to the R5 MU district designation. If you look at the MDR map in your packages, which is on page 29, the MDR district currently surrounds the reference R5 MU district as noted. This does not appear to be consistent and in keeping with the comprehensive plan. So I guess I completely agree with the comments that were entered into the record for Jeff Rochu by Don Gerard. I guess my point is, if there's a conflict between the comprehensive plan and the recommended ordinances, let's not create a worse situation, but instead, let's correct it. This decision will have a long-lasting impact. It appears that the comprehensive plan should be addressed instead of negating the zoning change and removal of the MDR classification from this parcel of land. I just want to thank you again for having and allowing me the opportunity to speak to you tonight, and thank you very much. And I also want to recognize the great work that the Planning Board and the AZORS committee has put into this effort. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Up next, we have Dan Lasky. Dan, you've been allowed to speak. Go ahead and unmute, state your name and address for the record. And you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Dan Lasky. I live at 23 Skyline Drive in Saco. I've been a resident here on Skyline for 32 years and lived in Saco for about 60 years. I just want to comment and piggyback on Bill's comments and Phil Hatch's comments. I am part of the neighborhood group, and I was out, I was one of the people that went out. In four hours, we collected, I think it was close to 160 signatures in regards to the signature petition. I just want to make sure that you folks, the councillors, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and the councillors, to, yeah, they had to do the wishes of the neighbors, the residents. They're clearly, you know, in favor of this new zoning to the R5 MU district. There is not one person that's for not doing it. I also want to say, I've been a participant of the Zoom meetings for, I don't know, for quite a while now, and I have garnered a huge respect for the work that they do and the preparation and the professionalism that the AZORS and the Planning Board Committee have put in. I really have, I appreciate all the work, and they put, they listened to the public and put a lot of time and effort and thought into it. So I guess my big thing is I want to make sure that you understand they had to represent us and to do, you know, what's best for us and the city. And I understand, you know, money and stuff. I also want to say, too, Nathan Johnston, his participation on that board, I didn't know him really well until then, but watching all the Zoom meetings and whatever, Nathan, I thought you did a great job, and I would hope that you'd be able to stick around. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. Up next, we have a phone caller identified as 2077982512. You've been allowed to speak. Go ahead and unmute, state your name and address for the record. And you have three minutes.
Okay, there you go. I'm gonna make a comment.
We can hear you, please.
State my name. It's Guy Scribner, 223 Beach Street. I have a comment about the residential sprinkler that you guys are talking about. Just a few comments. You know, home prices in Saco are, they're definitely skyrocketing. I'm a real estate investor. Adding another layer of cost, water hookup fees and more, it's a little bit of overreach, I think. And it's basically too costly and burdensome for builders. You know, in general, it adds a big cost. And sprinkler systems, they, you know, they cause a lot of damage. And usually it's the, you know, the smoke inhalation that does the damage, not the, you know, it's 180 degrees is one, there's two different types, 160 and 180 sprinkler heads go off. So I'd like you to really think about, it should be a choice. It shouldn't be mandatory. I think it's a little bit of government overreach along with everything else with COVID. And I think the projection is 11% increase this year for Saco homes being sold. So you're talking about adding another 2% to 3%. So we're, you know, so we're talking about 12% to 13% more. And if you know anything about real estate in Saco, it's pretty hot. And the cost is just gonna get out of control. And this is just another layer to everything else. And that's about the only thing I have to say.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Up next, we have an identifier as WSK. WSK, you've been allowed to speak. Go ahead and unmute, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Bill Kaney. I live at 3 BlackBerry Lane in Saco. By way of background, I am an attorney who practiced for years in front of the boards and the council in Saco. Despite months of effort by the Planning Board and Saco's rezoning committee, some members of the city staff, and at least my councilperson, had been intent on retaining the mixed-use zone on the Deering Trust land to accommodate the Flatley Company proposal. When staff could not persuade the Planning Board to retain the mixed-use zone, they apparently figured they would go directly to you. Your argument is based upon Attorney Katsefikis' memo, the attorney hired by the staff and representing the staff and not representing the residents of Saco. Attorney Katsefikis says that the city cannot change the MU4 zone to an MDR zone because it is not consistent with the comprehensive plan. He picked a particular provision from the comprehensive plan and said that the MDR zone is not consistent with that provision, and therefore you were barred from changing that particular zoning provision. Maine's law court, however, has said that a zoning amendment can rationally be deemed consistent with the comprehensive plan so long as it is in harmony with practically any of the goals of the comprehensive plan, no matter how general those goals or policies may be. You, as the council, get to make the factual determination regarding consistency, not the staff and not their attorney. While the MDR rezone may be inconsistent with the specific section cited by Attorney Katsefikis, the analysis does not end there. Is the MDR zone consistent with some provisions in the comprehensive plan? The answer is yes. The Deering Trust land is what, is part of what the comprehensive plan calls the downtown focus area. And the plan does encourage higher density in parts of that area, but not the Deering land. The comprehensive plan goes on to state on page 167 that one of the goals of zoning is to foster a pattern of land use that respects and builds upon established settlement patterns of an urban core. It further establishes the goal of high development to identify growth areas that are compatible with the existing settlement pattern. Putting up seven 50-foot-tall buildings with 48 units in each of them is not consistent with a settlement pattern in any part of Saco, and certainly not consistent with the single-family and two-family homes that surround the Deering Trust land. As taxpayers in Saco, we are asking you to respect the process that went on through the rezoning committee and the planning board for almost two years and protect the interest of your current residents over those of an out-of-state developer. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Up next, we have Michael Eon. Michael, you've been allowed to speak. Please go ahead and unmute, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle, and members of the council. I've been on the AZOR committee, as you know, for the last 18-plus months. I was on a couple of comprehensive plans, 2001, 2011, so I'm quite familiar with where we've gone. Had a little breakdown with our consultants first pot around, and Emily and the staff had to kind of pick up the ball to try to get us to where we are. So where we're at today is, I think we presented something to the council that was, you know, a working document that could be acted on, could be amended as we go on. Luckily, I was appointed to the Long Range Planning Commission and committee, and so probably working on that in the near future or some of this stuff. I'm not gonna hop on anything important, specific. I'm just gonna hop what I've been hopping on for the last six months is we have an issue with our, perceived issue by me anyway, and a superintendent of schools and a treasurer that we're pretty much at capacity in our lower-grade schools. So we're trying to work with that staff over there and come up with a matrix. And the matrix basically says, because I've only got a couple more minutes to speak here, it says, you're really, you're probably gonna expect .41 kids for two- and three-bedroom homes. So if you have a 300-unit project, and they happen to be two- and three-bedroom, just using it as an example, could have 123 kids in the school. And I think without a growth ordinance like Scarborough has in place to make sure that they're all right with that, where they allocate out X amount of units per year, and if they have more, then that's fine. Bitterford is just starting a master plan development zone. And our zone, when you start looking at what you gotta do to come in to see if you can do one of those, you've gotta come up with an analysis of the site, an analysis of what's there. And one of the things says "infrastructure." It's not clear what some people might think. Infrastructure is just sewer, water, telephone, whereas schools is very much part of an infrastructure of a neighborhood. And nationally, hopefully, they're gonna be finding that a little bit more. In Bitterford, they consider one of the criteria for, or having to do things correctly-- having to do things correctly is municipal and community service, a description of all municipal and community services, police, fire, rescue, recreation, hospitals, public schools, et cetera, need to be utilized as part of the master plan. We are, what Bob is proposing that Emily had put together as what we're gonna put back in for the MU5 and the Portland Road District, doesn't cover any of this stuff adequately. There's more language that's missing, number one. And number two, the densities in the proposed MU4, and I'm not speaking for or against that, and the one zone where we're gonna have just a little bit, where the MU3 zone is down at the end towards the Cascade right now, that's all zone 3,000 and 4,000 square feet if under the current zoning. So I'm not sure what you got, but let's not go down to 1,000, 2,000 square feet. And let's please make sure that all of these things have to have some sort of look at the schools. A week could be in a serious problem here in Saco. And sorry for running over 15 seconds. Thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you, Michael. Up next, we have an identifier as JC. JC, you've been allowed to speak. Go ahead and unmute. State your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Hello, can you hear me? I'm losing.
We can hear you.
You can, okay. This is Babe Karen, 264 Lincoln Street in Saco. And I do appreciate a lot of the comments by Phil Hatch, Jeff Broschu, and of course Mike Ian. Many of us have worked with the planning board on the zoning that's being proposed. Appreciated. And I just want to make sure we're aware of the support, you know, back. Can you hear me?
You're cutting in and out, but I think we can hear you. We can hear you.
Oh, okay. Okay. Then I should repeat. I'm sorry.
Please continue on. You have three minutes. You're now at two minutes.
Okay, Jane Karen, 264 Lincoln Street. And I just wanted to say how the support, backing, comments by Phil Hatch, Jeff Broschu, and now Mike Ian. Everyone has worked very hard on the planning board and it's so appreciated. And the zoning and ordinance work that's being proposed is important and it's backed by many, many citizens. So we ask that you really take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Linda Fenderson again. Linda, you've been allowed to speak. Again, please state your name and address for the record and you'll have three minutes. Linda, we cannot hear you if you're speaking.
Sorry, I didn't mean to raise my hand.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is Amy Chamberlain. Amy, you've been asked to unmute. Go ahead and unmute. State your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak. Amy Chamberlain, 71 Shattigee Road in Saco. I'm an owner of a two-unit there. And I'm just trying to review all of this and understand if there is a page within the attachments that shows the median density for residential, what it was and what it's being changed to. It's all very confusing, so I'm just trying to make sure I can get clarification on that if someone can direct me to a page. I see that I have medium-density residential district for where my two-unit is, where it's highlighted. And I wanted to be able to compare the changes that you have for what is allowed for dimensional standards, your minimum of lot area, sewer, unsued, et cetera. And I have not been able to find that.
City Planner Hamblin or... Denise, do you want to take that?
Mr. Mayor, Bob Hamblin here.
City Planner Hamblin, go ahead.
This is just the kind of question that city planners wish we'd heard about three days before the evening of the meeting. Because it's very easily addressed. Currently, being on Shattigee Road where you are, ma'am, you're in the R2 zone.
Yep.
7,500 square feet is the minimum lot size that's required. And let me take a quick look. I'm relatively sure that 75, okay, R2. And for a two-family, what's required is 5,000 square feet per unit. So if, if in fact your property is a conforming property, then your two-family home is on a 10,000-square-foot lot, possibly larger. Okay? Now, that's the, that's the existing situation. Excuse me.
City Planner Hamblin, is this something that Amy could contact you?
Yeah, I don't want to waste folks' time.
Absolutely. Amy, the planning department can be contacted at 282-3487. And typically, we're in the office 8:30 until 5:00 p.m., Monday through Thursday, 7:30 to 4:00 on Fridays. So give a call anytime and most anybody who answers the phone can help you out with that.
Thank you very much. I unfortunately just received my mail late. A neighbor's been getting it. So just, just starting all of this today.
That's fine. Give us a call and we'd be glad to talk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Planner Hamblin. Thank you, Amy. Okay. Up next is Kelly Archer. Kelly, you've been allowed to speak. Go ahead and unmute and state your name and address for the record. Just know that three-minute time limit and, and thank you.
Thank you. Can you hear me, Mr. Mayor?
We can hear you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, I am Kelly Archer of 185 Bradley Street, a sworn mayor-appointed and council-approved member of the ZOR's zoning ordinance revisions steering committee. It has been an honor to serve the city of Saco for 27 months on this committee. It has been very educational, quite extensive, and a huge undertaking. In those 27 months, I have personally attended every meeting, reviewed tens of thousands of pages, and committed to almost 1,000 hours in due diligence. Since May of 2020, I have repeatedly asked city officials and attorney as to due process to no resolution on a couple of items. I have publicly put on record in emails, planning board, ZOR's Zoom meetings, and city council Zoom meetings my disconnect with the due process, transparency, and fairness in regards to the MDR, the Portland Road District, the I2 zone, as well as my right as a voting ZOR's member being suppressed. I wholeheartedly agree with the position of Phil Hatch's comments and others tonight and the letter to the council. It is in keeping with the planning board unanimous and repeated votes and in agreement with the ZOR's members and many members of the public at several public hearings. In regards to the suggested motions, the proposed R5 MU and Portland Road District is contentious and was not properly vetted for the betterment of the city of Saco, in my opinion. I wholeheartedly and extremely disagree with the council's suggested motion as it disregards the will of the citizens of Saco. It is unilateral, unjust, and unfair. This happened during the I2 council discussion off North Street process, as you recall, a last-minute unilateral decision presented to you that was not the vote and the verbiage of the planning board. Due process, fairness, and transparency was not performed. Do not reinstate the R5 MU. Again, this is in my opinion. Do not dismiss the hard work of sworn planning board ZOR's members. If the suggested motion is made, then my question is why does the city of Saco even have boards and commissions to do the quasi-judicial and necessary work for the city if at the 11th hour of our work or any other future board can be unilaterally undone? I would also recommend to the council that in the future, that legal counsel and its opinion be hired by the council and not by the department or any city department for their unbiased legal opinion for that particular, for that particular board. I thank you so much and all the very best. It's been a long, tenuous couple of years plus, and God bless you all. Thanks.
Thank you, Kelly. Up next, we have Don Gerard. Don, you've been allowed to speak. Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, thank you very much. Don Gerard, chairman of the planning board. I reside at 58 Lafayette Street in Saco. I just want to make a few comments, sort of springing off what Mike Eon talked about earlier relative to the PR district on the Portland Road. I don't want the council to sense that the planning board and the ZOR were in any way, shape, or form in general opposed to master plan development in the Portland Road District. Excuse me. I think what happened in the process, as I understand it, from Mike Eon and from Kelly Archer and from Peg Poole, who stuck with us as members of the ZOR committee, that what was under discussion for a long time on the Portland Road District is that there should be nodes of master plan development that occurred in different areas on Portland Road. And what happened is related to us, planning board members, by ZOR committee members, was that somehow that discussion got lost or dropped during the development of the proposal that finally came to us as a planning board for revisions to the zoning ordinance. What's troublesome to me is if you look at page 335 of your packet this evening, and I'll very simply say that's table 401 of the zoning ordinance, which specifies dimensional standards for the zoning districts. If you look at the PR and, and I'll, it's also the R5 MU, but I'll talk about the PR district in particular. There was an asterisk in that table. But unfortunately, and what was provided to you this evening for your packet in page 335 is there is no asterisk note to that table. More succinctly, what happens is the asterisk, the asterisk note to that table outlines the master plan development standards for development in both the PR and the R5 MU districts. And what that gets down to, as Mike Eon alluded to, is in a master plan development, you could have gone down to a lot density per dwelling unit as low as 1,000 square feet per dwelling unit, the lot area. And I think what the ZOR and the planning board found troublesome is that without specific nodes in which that would apply in the Portland Road District, if it applied in general to the whole district, as Mike Eon very succinctly and very, you know, very acutely pointed out, is that would allow the potential for a significant amount of residential development in the Portland Road District way beyond what anybody had contemplated. I mean, we're talking about a conceivably 45 dwelling units per acre out there in the Portland Road District, in general, through the whole district. And I think what happened is somewhere along the process, while the ZOR was considering the ordinance and what was being proposed, is there was a disconnect that happened between what should be master plan development density and where master plan development density should occur. And as a result of that, what's happening, you know, for you this evening is you've got an ordinance in front of you that has basically, if the asterisk note has not disappeared, is a general requirement that you can get down to master plan development in the PR district on the Portland Road, down to 1,000 square feet per dwelling unit. And from what I understand from the ZOR and whatever, that was not what the intent was in the beginning. The intent was to create nodes on the Portland Road District that that might be appropriate, but not in general appropriate throughout the whole Portland Road District. And so I think it's important for you folks to understand that the ZOR and the planning board were not in general opposed to master plan development on Route 1 or in the PR district along Route 1, but were, you know, opposed generally to having that kind of development be allowed throughout the entire PR district on Route 1. And so I think it's important for you to understand that. And so as we move forward with the ordinance, I hope that, you know, number one, we don't in general invoke and you don't in general adopt the ordinance as it's drafted now with master plan developments in the PR district, throughout the PR district, down to as little as 1,000 square feet per dwelling unit. You know, this is going to require some work in the future to go back and pick up where the ZOR, I think, left off in determining what are the appropriate nodes, you know, on Route 1 for master plan development to occur. And therefore, you know, those nodes might be appropriate at 1,000 square feet per dwelling unit, but I don't think you want to wholeheartedly give up all of the, you know, all of the land area in the PR district, you know, to that denser development. And I think, you know, springing off what Mike Eon was talking about, I think this was Mike Eon's heartburn from the very beginning with the way the ordinance is being drafted right now, and I wholeheartedly agree with him. And I'll, you know, speaking, I probably shouldn't, but speaking for the planning board and the ZOR in general, that was my sense of that's what our heartburn was in that we shouldn't go forward with that denser development throughout the entire PR zone. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council.
Thank you, Don. Up next, we have Dan Lasky again. Dan, please state your name and address for the record again, and you have three minutes.
Yeah, hi, Dan Lasky, 23 Skyline Drive, Saco. Just for the record, I misspoke. I said I was in favor of the R5 MU, which I, from my comments, I think you probably gathered, I am clearly, clearly not in favor of the MDR. I just want to get that on the record. And then, and the other thing, I just want to say, like I say, I am in a butter to the Kimball Trust property that Flatley is trying to put seven five-story buildings behind me. And be quite honest with you, and again, I've attended all these meetings. I honestly don't know how this even got here, because if you just look at the neighborhood review that the city is supposed to be doing, lights, noise, traffic, and it was mentioned by a couple of the people on the planning board, how did this even get this far? I can look out my back right now and I can see the lights at the Kimball House on them. If we put what's gonna amount to Logan Airport lighting behind me, this is gonna glow, so it doesn't even pass it just for that. This is just, I'm not speaking for me. I'm speaking for hundreds of neighbors that I've spoken to personally over the last months, even with the COVID. So, but I just, I really wanted to make sure that the MDR is what it is. This is a residential neighborhood. This is a residential neighborhood. I work for a dairy lumber company, I'm not against growth, I'm not against building, but this is a residential neighborhood. It should be put in kind behind us, as many other people have more eloquently spoken tonight to that point. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Up next is Jennifer Day. Jennifer, you've been allowed to speak. Go ahead and unmute. State your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. My name is Jennifer Day. I am new to the city of Saco, residing at 49 Rosewood Drive. And tonight, I come with two hats. One is a former counselor for the city of Augusta, so I have great sympathy and gratitude for the work that you put in and the hours that you put that work in. And I'm a real estate broker, having been in the real estate profession for 24 years. And it's with that hat that I would like to take a moment just to speak to Article 8, the infrastructure regarding specifically sprinkler systems and the requirement for sprinklers in new construction. And being new to the city, I didn't follow the history of getting to this point for this final document, so I do apologize if what I say or suggest has already been gone over 100 times. Just curious if there was an economic impact study as to the added cost to construction, to infrastructure, to inspection, design, permitting, specialized contracting, all of those things that go into the accommodation of built-in sprinkler systems, more particularly in private water supply construction. Also wondered if there was an environmental study that went into the decision to take a look at the water capacity, the impact on our public water supply for the properties that are within the municipal zoning that's serviced by public water, the consideration for environmental impacts for the areas that the new construction is going to be taking place in, if it's going to look like fire ponds in areas that don't have municipal water, what that's going to do to the environment around the subdivision, and all of those factors. I also would like to suggest a phase-in, if all of those things have been considered, and this is a die that's been cast, a phase-in period to take into consideration the urgency of the immediate housing need that's currently in place. As you all know, there's a short supply for housing, a most non-existent supply of affordable housing, and to add these additional barriers to construction when there needs to be more housing starts could add to the shortfall of available housing. We also have a shortage of materials and are in real dire situations in regards to access to contractors. So to impose these additional impediments into new construction would stymie advancement for some of those builds that might be in consideration. Also wanted to know if there was consideration given to the regionality and the problems that occur with freezing in our region and the added delay that construction undergoes because of the seasonal elements of construction and the problem of freezing. So I just wanted to put those ideas and thoughts out there, and perhaps all of that has been well flushed, and I look forward to paying better attention to what's going on in the city and potentially being involved in the future in some capacity. Thank you all for your time.
Up next, we have Bill Klow. Bill, you've been allowed to speak. Go ahead and unmute. State your name and address for the record and present your comments to the City Council. Three minutes.
Yeah, hello. Can you hear me?
Can hear you.
Yes, my name is William Klow. I live at 257 Lincoln Street. I've lived here for 23 years, along with other family members that live in this area. We've been here approximately 30 years. I've just recently been getting involved in what's going on with the city. But I've also been going along with every meeting with the Flatley thing out back here. I'd like to applaud Dan Lasky, Phil Hatch, Kelly, Jane, of what they're saying about We just don't understand how that has really gotten as far as it's gotten. And I want to get back to the transparency with the citizens. Some of us feel like some of these things are just being swept under the rug, and it's not very transparent. That's all I got. Thank you.
Up next, we have Phil Hatch. Phil, you've been allowed to speak again. State your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. Phil Hatch, 19 Evergreen Drive in Saco. I failed to make one point in my last comments, an additional point. If for, we've offered up many valid reasons to avoid the suggested motion that's on agenda, item A, however, if you choose to disregard those reasons and move forward, I would simply ask that you reconsider a longer timeframe. I can't imagine how something can get fully vetted in one week when we're talking about adding major changes to the ordinance. So I would simply ask that you consider a longer timeframe, Planning Board input and public input into that process. Again, I'm trying to encourage transparency, due diligence, and fairness to all of the citizens that are being affected. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Mike Eon again. Mike, you've been allowed to speak. Please go ahead and unmute. State your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
59 Boom Road. Been a developer, I've been living in Saco since '79, and I've been in the development business all that long, in Bitterford, Saco, and Old Orchard, been on EIC for 20-plus years. So I've been around a little bit of history, and I was quite passionate about the densities out on the Portland Road, but basically combining four or five zones, which are primarily commercial for as long as I've ever had been on comprehensive plans. The idea was that's prime land, and now that the ZOR is out there, it's very prime land, and we always tried to keep it at least 50%, if not, right currently, it's about 70% commercial requirement, probably 30% residential. Under this proposal that you've got in front of you, and I haven't even seen the densities, I'm afraid to think that the densities are going to change from what the MU 3 zone is from 3,000 to 4,000 to 1,000 to 2,000. But aside from that, there's something in there that, one of the pieces Bob has in there, and that was from a draft that everybody agreed that we didn't really want to deal with that particular draft, it's talking about being able to allow 70% residential and 30% commercial. Now, I don't know if that's a typo. Maybe Bob can confer, or somebody in the department could probably tell us if we got a little extra time here, maybe an extra week, maybe we could talk to Stan Tech, they're going to be on board with us. Maybe we can talk to some of the other people that just did the market analysis and just get their take. Because I know Scarborough, they have a, anything that gets more than 50/50, then you've got to explain as a developer what you're doing for the city and from a tax-based point of view. And so that I kind of forgot to throw in there, and hopefully, we can get that all vetted out in a week or two, but I don't see how you can, Bob can get this all ready for a council package for you for Thursday or Friday and vote on it next Monday as a final product. I think we would be leaving something on the table. Thanks again for listening to me.
Thank you, Michael. Up next, we have Don Pylon again. Don, you've been allowed to speak. Go ahead and unmute. State your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes. Don, can you hear us? We cannot hear you. I can barely hear you.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, you're just very soft.
Okay. Okay. Never mind. I'll leave, never mind.
If you want to turn up your volume.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Okay. Just to give the council some background, this item about protect sprinklers in homes has been an item in the legislature. There was a bill before the legislature a couple terms ago to mandate sprinklers in all new homes across the state. The bill never found any legs, and the Fire Marshal's Office, it appears that now they're going town by town, trying to get some towns to get this in their comprehensive plans, and I was surprised to find it in Saco. But be that as it may, some of the reasons why it never got out of committee was because there was concern about sprinklers activating, just going off by mistake and causing water damages and damages in homes. And the insurance companies that testified at the committee level were concerned that they had experienced in other municipalities and other states that there was more water damage in these sprinkler systems, frankly, did not perform as they were meant to perform. My question here in this proposal is, it appears that you're going to rely on a well to supply the water to the system to suppress a fire. Is that my understanding? And who can answer that question, but never mind. In some of the previous bills, they've been asked to put a 1,000 or a 2,000-gallon tank in the ground as a water supply, as a reserve water supply to activate the system if there was a fire in the house. That's an additional cost the homeowner or builder has to absorb, regardless, and that's an additional cost on top of a sprinkler system. Those things freeze in the winter. Sometimes towns will ask for, municipalities want a pond. A pond's no good in the winter because a pond freezes, and sometimes these pumps freeze. And that, put that aside, in a drought situation, we've had droughts in the past five or 10 years in this area. If you've got a pump, if you're relying on a well, wells don't perform when there's a drought. If you've got two wells on a site, and you have a fire and it triggers that fire suppression system, you barely have a trickle of water that will come out of that fire suppression system. The other reasons why people don't want these fire suppression systems in their homes, it costs a lot of money to put them in, and now you're asking them to put a second pump system in or a second well in for just a fire suppression system? You're talking tens of thousands of dollars on top of the cost of construction of the home. It's just frankly, more money on top of the already skyrocketing cost to build a house in Saco. It frankly is not worth it. We have a full-time fire department here in town with two substations. We have one in North Saco where this would be the most, that's probably where you see the most need for it, because you have no fire hydrants out in that area. They rely on bringing water in on tanker trucks to put fires out in that area, and they rely on mutual aid from other towns with tanker trucks, and they draft from ponds to bring in more water if it's a fully involved fire. But we're lucky in Saco that we have a full-time fire department, and they get there pretty fast if there's a structure fire, and we have mutual aid. So I don't see the need for it here in this town, maybe in some other rural towns farther out west, but I don't see the need for it here. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Up next, we have Kathleen Jadjo. Kathleen, you've been allowed to speak. Go ahead and unmute. State your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Did that work?
We can hear you. Yes. Yes.
All I wanted to do, said there was that I had sent a letter in, and apparently somehow it didn't get to be part of the record, but I would like it to be part of the record. And so what do I have to do to make that happen? Did I lose you?
No, we can hear you. Did you want to read your letter?
Well, I read it earlier, so I don't want to bore people, and I also would like it to be something that people can refer to and look at and read. That's why I got it to you yesterday.
All those documents will be added and codified on the city website where the minutes are and where the video is.
Okay. So somebody has that? Because if you don't, I can send it again.
We all have that.
Okay. Perfect. That was not, that was the big problem of the day. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathleen. Take care. Last call for public comment during the public hearing. For the third time, Don Gerard, you're being unmuted to speak to the council. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Don Gerard, Chairman of the Planning Board again. Sort of off the subject, but you know, part of your previous consideration this evening, long-range planning committee members, I think Planning Board members, Alissa Buttott and Matt Provenco are excellent choices, excellent choices for the long-range planning committee. Young, thoughtful, very well-spoken, very organized-thinking people that I think will contribute significantly to the long-range planning committee and what they have to do in the future, beginning with the comprehensive plan. Mike Eon from the Economic Development Committee Commission, rather, again, another excellent choice. And in general, Saco residents, Peg Poohland, has been a member of the committee, the ZORs Committee, has tuck in there all the way through the process and was Committee, has tuck in there all the way through the process and was writing there up to the end. Very thoughtful, very, you know, very considerate person, good choice. Sandra Gray Gaye is a member of the, Saco resident member of the, the committee, served with Sandy before on the planning board, very excellent attorney, well thought out, you know, very, you know, you can expect this person to contribute a lot. And so I just wanted to make those comments in general about the committee. One of the things I wanted to mention to the council, with you, Mr. Mayor, is if I continue, and as long as I continue to be here with the planning board, one of the things I mentioned some weeks back, and I know Denise is aware of this, I'm going to continue to try to exert as much influence as we can on the zoning ordinance, subdivision regs, site plan review, development standards, workshops that we do virtually every week. This ordinance that you're about to act on, the subdivision standards and site plan standards are not perfect. Believe me in my experience and indulge me for a minute. I've been doing this for the City of Saco for 40 years, believe it or not. I started in 1980 as an employee to the zoning board of appeals. Been involved in this process, in this process a long time, through several comprehensive plans, through zoning board meetings, through planning board meetings. None of our ordinances and standards are ever going to be perfect, as Bob Hamblin so eloquently put it not so long ago. These are living documents that require a constant massaging, constant review, and constant change. And my objective, as long as I continue on the planning board, is that we will continue to hold workshops on a meeting by meeting basis, if we can, to review things that still need to be cleaned up in the ordinance and dealt with as we go along. And so I want you to recognize that aside from the fact that we're adopting an ordinance at a given point in time, that process continues. That process will continue in parallel with the Long Range Planning Committee working on a new comprehensive plan. And so I just wanted to make that statement and just inform you that that's my intent as we go forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Don. Okay. Seeing no. Seeing no other hands raised. Councillor Johnston.
With a close to public hearing, on the public hearing on the zoning ordinance, site plan, subdivision ordinances and zoning map this evening, January 4th, 2021.
Second. Motion's been made by Councillor Johnston, second by Councillor Menthorn. At this point. Before we start discussion. I'd like to call Planning and Economic Development Director Denise Klabet.
Thank you, Mayor Doyle. And then at, at, obviously would want to invite Bob to make some additional comments before your deliberation. Just what I'd like to do is I took extensive notes while, while the public hearing was going on, so I want a couple of clarifications. I, I don't remember who exactly asked why we had, we had hired certain legal counsel and that the department shouldn't be allowed to hire certain legal counsel. I do need you to know that the legal counsel that we obtained was actually hired by the former city administrator, and it did go through the proper process of hiring a specific attorney, specific for this project. Because one of the parts of doing the RFP for the initial zoning ordinance revision did not include legal counsel, and we were actually told that we needed to have legal counsel to do that. And so that's how we hired Jim Cassipicus. I just wanted people to understand that that was a transparent process, and we did hire a person that we felt was qualified, and it was signed off by the city administrator. Couple of things on the master plan in the Portland Road, I think there was reference to why don't we go back to just specific, specific areas in the Portland Road rather than completely master planned developments all over Route 1? We started with that, and when you start talking with various folks who have parcels of property and whether the original zoning, the zoning that, that exists now has actually bifurcated lots that have business for the first 500 linear feet, for example, and the back part of anywhere from 1,000 to 1,200, even further, are actually industrial. And so you're traversing business to get to industrial and vice versa. And so by, by what I call affectionately cherry picking lots, we're basically saying one property owner can develop that lot or can sell their lot for business and another one can't. And so we're not in a position to start saying, well, if you're behind Gallo Chevrolet, you can do that, but if you're behind the campground, you can't do that. And so it was easier, I didn't say easier, but it was more consistent to do that, you know, with basically with the comp plan. I'm sorry here for a second. Lost everybody? Can you still hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, perfect. I just lost the thing. So, so as you take a look at Jim Cass' memo and Bob's memo, as you make the decision whether to put master plan development, I would urge you to consider if you do not want to have that in that area, is potentially put it as a conditional use so you actually can regulate where it goes, how it goes, and all of that. So I just need you to be mindful of that. When it comes to the solar array or any other new topic that was brought forth this evening, my advice is some of this stuff does require a little bit more research, and rather than not voting or delaying the zoning ordinance revision vote to the end of January or some other date, is to actually pull the pieces that have been brought forth this evening that, that may need more vetting and may need more research, and actually send that back to the planning board for additional vetting and reconsideration. So throw in like potentially maybe the solar array or some of these other areas, or like, I think there was a pile on that brought up the fact for drive-throughs and things like that. So rather than sit there and debate that this evening, I think putting that back to the planning board and taking a look at that. For example, the drive-throughs were actually a recommendation from the market analysis group as well. I'm trying to look at this here. And then the three, obviously, staff and the city, the legal counsel that we contracted with to make recommendations, the three motions that you have before you for consideration, we, obviously staff is behind that, so we would like you to take that into full consideration. And looking at some of these others. Oh, so someone brought up the fact and very concerned about the proliferation of VRBO and unregulated use for Airbnb and all of that. And to me, that is, is, yes, part of zoning ordinance, but it's actually much more regulatory portion, and I think we need to do that with policy, and that needs to be separated from the zoning ordinance. I don't want to, I hesitate saying, okay, we can't pass a zoning ordinance because of these issues. These are real life issues, and we need to vet those out separately. And I think putting that back to the planning board for their recommendation, and that this should or should not happen, is a great asset to the city, that back. I'm thinking here. And I think that's it. The other thing too is I know some folks are concerned with the R5MU, obviously, and that's just a very, very valid concern. Again, that was part of the comp plan 2011, part of your comp plan 2018. Yes, in direct concert, but delaying the vote on this basically says that the development that's being proposed right now is able to happen right now under current zoning. And so whether you pass the zoning ordinance this evening or not, that development will be allowed. So I, you know, obviously, we need to work with the developer, you know, if it happens or not. And so I just want you folks to be mindful of that. Bob can speak a little bit more directly to the specific motions if there are any questions, but I think he and Jim Cassipicus pretty much identified what and the reasons why those motions are ones that you need to be considering. But I want to really, really thank the planning board for all of their work, the zoning ordinance revision committee, especially the three or four that hung in there through the entire two plus years process, and that includes Peg Pullen and Kelly Archer and Ethan Johnston and Council Nathan Johnston, and whom I'm missing, Mike Eon. How could I forget Mike? Those four folks really, really put more than enough energy in this process. And so, and we're all okay with them not agreeing with, with where we're at right now. I mean, I think that's, that's the council's decision-making process this evening to decide where we need to go with, with the recommendations. So, and again, I want to thank the council for all of their time. This was a long public hearing, but it's a very, very important part of the process. And delaying the vote on this is just going to delay the fact that we're already four years from a 40-year-old comprehensive plan. So I want people to be mindful of that. And when I talk about a comprehensive, zoning ordinance, I should say. So, thank you. And Bob, if you want to add anything to that before they deliberate, and then obviously we're both available for Q and A as you have your discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
City Planner Hamblin.
Thank you. Thank you, Denise. I think you did a, a very nice job, particularly this time of evening, on picking up on some of the, oh, issues that percolated to the surface from our, from our dozens of speakers this evening. No, I'm not going to delve into any particular issues. I'm, I'm just like the rest of you that I've sat here for the past couple of hours, taking a lot of input in. More than anything, I, as a staff member, I'd like to hear from the council. Where did they, where were they before the beginning of the public hearing? What is the public hearing brought about in terms of questions or the need for clarification? And councillors, as you know, tentatively, I mean, this is penciled in for a return one short week from now. I guess the, to me, the big question is, do you feel this is ready to be brought back for a final vote in one week? If not, the following Monday is a holiday, so there would not be a, a meeting on the 18th. The 25th would be a candidate evening for a second and final, if you, as councillors, feel you need some more time to digest everything that's gone on here. So more than anything, I'm, I am very curious to hear where the council is at, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, City Planner Hamblin. Bob, Denise, just maybe for clarification, I want to make sure everyone's clear, because we shouldn't be deciding on a zoning ordinance revision, especially when our zoning ordinance has not been updated since the 1980s when I was a kid. We shouldn't be updating a zoning ordinance based on one project and one project alone. So, but, just so that everybody has the facts, the current ordinance as it sits today, not that it's, not the new ordinance that's being proposed, but the current ordinance that sits today, the project that was, that was brought forward by so many constituents could happen, correct? The Flatley project over on Lincoln Street could happen under today's zoning.
Yes.
Yes, okay. So, and, and prior to the planning board's work, the zoning ordinance revision steering committee, even with their recommendations, and before it got to the planning board, it still allowed for that, that same kind of, same kind of zoning in that area, is that correct?
Yes, it's wrote in the 2011 comprehensive plan. The zoning ordinance was amended to create the MU4 zone, which allows a project such as Flatley is proposing. That was done in 2013. The MU4 zone for mixed use, a mix of uses, master plan development has been, been around since, well, for about seven, going on eight years now.
And during the 2013, 14 area, wasn't that area considered, actually, it might have been 2016, 2015, 2016, that the Kimball Health Center was also slated for a potential site for a, some sort of school, either be another school or a consolidated school, which again, you know, would, would have been allowed under then zoning. Is that still allowed under the current zoning as proposed?
Mr. Mayor, before I shoot from the hip, I just want to take a quick look. We are in the, and you're looking at, again, the MU4 zone for the Kimball Health Center property?
Yes.
Yeah. I just want to be very sure of that before I answer.
My, my, my point here is I want, I want everybody to understand exactly what the facts are, so the facts don't get misconstrued, and we should not be changing our zoning ordinance to appease one project or one other project. We should be looking at zoning. We have growth, growth is a problem for our community. I don't think it's a problem. I actually think growth is good, but it's managing where growth goes. The, the comprehensive plan of 20, 2011 and 2018 say one thing, and the zoning concurs with that, and it seems that the zoning was changed at some point to make sure that a project potentially doesn't happen. And, and, and that's what we, we can't be governing like that. We need to look forward in our planning and our zoning. We need to look forward on where we're going to put growth, rather than say, well, we don't like this project and it's potentially harmful to our neighborhood, so we're going to change that zoning so that it can't go there. I think we, we set a, we set a bad precedent, and we start going down a slippery slope when we start zoning to not approve projects. And, and projects may or may not happen on its face. I mean, we can't say whether a project is going to happen or not. We're not developers. Well, maybe some of us are in our spare time. I can't, I can't say what everybody does, but I'm just trying to make sure that all the facts are out there and make sure that we look at this as an entire zoning ordinance, because so many people have done such an amazing work in getting this to this process, and we want to value their opinions, but we also want to set the city up for success moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bob Hamblin again. Just to clarify, MU4 zone as it exists today, a number of uses are possible, including single-family dwellings, two-family, places of worship, daycare homes, and many more. And then there's a separate category, and that is permitted uses that are subject to master plan development. And that kind of ratchets up to include multifamily housing, elderly congregate housing, nursing homes, health clinics, healthcare clinics, and the like. You had asked specifically, are schools allowed in the MU4 zone? And, and as, as the city's planner, I recognize the city was some years back, looking at this piece of property as a potential site for, for a, an elementary or possibly middle school, but schools are not allowed there. Clearly, it would have taken zoning amendment to have allowed a school to be built on that property. They're, they're not currently allowed.
And would they be allowed under the new proposed zoning ordinance?
Once again, I want to make absolutely sure of my answer, so let me just.
I know I'm making you do some work, Bob. I apologize. I just want to make sure you do it right.
It's no, no worse than flipping through papers, so, okay. Well, the answer to that has to be, of course, the MU4, the package that has been presented to the council this evening, that is, the zoning ordinance as amended, the MU4 zone no longer exists. It's been swallowed up, so to speak, by the MDR, the medium-density residential zone. In the medium-density residential zone, yes, schools, both public and private, are a permitted use.
So, if the state was to tell us we needed to do a consolidated school of K through five, or pre-K through five, or pre-K through eight, because as we know, that the state has said that projects four and five are going to be funded, and we were project number four, so it's now just crossing our fingers to wait to hear what kind of money. But what you're saying is a consolidated K eight, K through eight, or K through five school could go on that property.
On the Kimball Health Center property, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Planning and Economic Development Director Clavett, you had sent us an email. Did you want to summarize the emails that you had sent to us? You're muted.
All right, there we go. Let's try this again.
We can hear you now.
Yeah, just basically in summary, the folks addressed everything from solar farms, which you heard about it this evening, talked about impact fees, and that will be addressed at a later point in time, the residential, the R5 MU district versus, you know, whether to put that back into MDR or put it back to the MU4. Then the sprinkler systems were another email that you received. Again, some of these will need some further review, and I think I would suggest that any of these that are not part of the three that have been discussed and vetted with legal are things that we refer back for further amendments. And we rectified that situation. There was an email that actually challenged the height requirements for amusement parks, basically Fun Town, and that was clarified by Bob, and you have that as part of your packet, that the maximums for amusement parks are exempt from the height requirements. So that wasn't an issue. There is an issue about dogs and the maximum per dwelling. We're dealing with that. That's just an issue. You have that email, but that is more of an enforcement issue, so we're working on that. You have also an issue on temporary versus permanent structures. Again, that's more of a planning issue and an enforcement issue. We're working on that. We had a question from the KOA campground. We were able to work with that, satisfied the questions asked. Again, you have some emails on the multi-unit residential dwellings, which are part of the master plan development that we're looking for on Portland Road. And then there was a question, I think Councilment Thorne brought up, about the Claire parcels and what that entails, and so we were able to produce a map and discuss that. So I think that's in summary, and everything brought up in the emails pretty much was addressed as part of your public hearing, other than, I don't recall, I did walk out of the room a couple of times here, if anybody talked about sprinklers. I think there was a conversation about the sprinklers. And again, that is something that probably should be addressed, but probably not something that can be addressed and turned around in a week or two, even three or four, and should probably go back and get vetted through the planning. And that's the summary.
Thank you, Director Clavett. Council questions? Okay, roll call vote on closing the public hearing. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Mintorn?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Closed the public hearing at 9:05 PM by a vote of 7-0. Thank you very much. Counsel, are there any further motions at this time? Counselor Johnston?
If you're looking for a motion to, I guess, get this conversation started, then I will offer that. I move to continue consideration of the repeal of the existing zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations and zoning map, and the enactment of the zoning ordinance, site plan ordinance, and subdivision ordinance for a final vote at the January 11, 2021 city council meeting.
Motion been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Counselor Archer? Motion's been made by Counselor Johnston, second by Counselor Archer. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Mintorn?
The motion that's been read is against staff's recommendations with respect to the R5 MU master plan development along the Route 1 corridor, as well as the LDR parcels providing access to the industrial parcels off of Flag Pond Road. I understand my ward's concerns, all 160-some-odd signers of the petition, that are totally against the Flatley Company building the apartments there. But as Director Clavett already stated, that development has already started. From the standpoint of the paperwork has been filed, so changing the zoning at this point in time will not stop that development. And at the very beginning of that, people asked me those questions, and they got the same answer, that, you know, it's already in motion. And this isn't going to reverse that motion as much as all of them, and I would like it to, because I know it's going to cause grave traffic issues throughout my ward. All that being said, the bigger question and bigger concern I have is that many of these changes that we're seeing in this recommendation from the planning board, I feel, our overreach on their authority and that the Long Range Planning Committee in their work that they will be doing with respect to generating the new 2021-22 comprehensive plan is where some of these should be put into place. I'm not saying that their work should be discounted, it obviously shouldn't. There's many thousands upon thousands of hours of work that have gone into the document. However, I think from the standpoint of the legal ramifications that this motion creates for us, we should not move in that direction. We should take staff's recommendation. Those items that need to be changed to reflect the planning board's desires should be prioritized for the Long Range Planning Committee to hear in part of the new comprehensive plan, and then a package of amendments to the ZOR should be incorporated as part of that comprehensive plan acceptance a year, 18 months out from now. I think doing anything else would be irresponsible of us as a council from that standpoint. This is a litigious world. We hear and see too many court filings through the council as it is now. Why put ourselves in a position to have more? Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mintorn. Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. First, I would say that I think my motion doesn't really go against the city staff's recommendation. First of all, we have suggested motions. They've always been suggested. It's council that gets to dictate what a motion is. All I've done is suggested through my motion to council that we move this through as adopted by the planning board. I spent two years, along with several other people. It's far from perfect. There's items in it that I'm not comfortable with, but ultimately, we have to move a planning for a new document forward. Taking on this entire ordinance really went against what I had suggested two years ago, as we really should have done the comp plan first and then addressed the zoning issues. There's some good things in here. I think that to try to sit here and tackle some of these items that have come up before we approve this, we'll be here for the next five years. I mean, I appreciate all the comments that the public gave, you know, many of them I had previously heard through the planning process. Some were new, and, you know, I appreciate those, and I think that, you know, as Director Clavett has stated several times now, those are things that we can address in subsequent amendments, or, I mean, some of these items, you know, short-term rentals came up tonight. I've been trying to get that through for three-plus years, and whether it was the code office saying, oh, we need to wait, you know, kicking the can down the road and wait for other people to enact it first, what have you. I mean, I've been looking for school impact fees for several years, so there's plenty of things on the list that, you know, as I've stated several times, I have a list. It's several pages long, things that I hope to move through the planning board process. I understand the potential or the threats, maybe, that are out there of litigation. Ultimately, I could sit here right now, and I can pull up that comp plan, and I can kick off one after another how this is not consistent with the current comp plan. If you'd like me to do that, I could. I don't think that's necessary. I think that that's the threat that's thrown out there quite often. I mean, if we were going to follow that, I could pull up several contract zones that many of you councillors have previously approved that weren't consistent with comp plans. I mean, ultimately, what we have before us is two years of a lot of dialogue. Everybody involved understated what we're, you know, have been proposing, and, you know, with respect to how this, I don't know, I guess somehow got angled into the John Flatley Company project, I think most of the people speaking tonight understood, stand that that project could happen under the current zoning. The concern is for what happens if that project doesn't come to fruition, and we have now adopted a zoning ordinance that actually increases the density of that specific area. I just, I mean, again, you know, I've said it weeks ago, that I thought we should push this forward as proposed with, you know, respect to those involved, and, you know, if we're really afraid of litigation, then that's a whole nother issue for this council, in my opinion. You know, I don't know. I mean, if you guys want to offer up amendments to my motion, so be it, but, you know, I think that we should push this forward as is. Thank you.
Counselor Johnston, can you reread your motion? I want to make sure that I have it correctly and that the record has it correctly and that the councillors have it correctly.
All right, so what I basically did was take the third motion and subtracted portion of it, but I moved to continue consideration of the repeal of the existing zoning ordinance and subdivision regulations and zoning map, and the enactment of the zoning ordinances, site plan ordinance, and subdivision ordinance, and zoning map for a final vote at the January 11, 2021 city council meeting. Essentially, I'm, again, pushing this forward as is, not making any additional changes and accepting what the ZOR's committee and planning board put forth to the city council.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure that I got that correctly. Thank you. Any further councillor comment, discussion? Okay, seeing no councillor seeking recognition, no hands raised. A roll call vote on the proposed motion put forth by Counselor Johnston. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
No.
Counselor Gunn?
No.
Counselor Berman?
No.
Counselor Mintorn?
No.
Counselor McPhail?
No.
And Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion fails two to five. Counselor, any further motions? Counselor Berman?
Yeah, I'll move the suggested motion. I move to continue consideration of the repeal of the existing zoning ordinance, subdivision regulations, and zoning map, and the enactment of the zoning ordinance, site plan ordinance, and subdivision ordinance, and zoning map to the January 11, 2021 council meeting, and to direct city staff and legal counsel to prepare and provide amendments to set ordinances and zoning map to, one, reinstate the R5 MU district to be consistent with the comprehensive plan as described in Exhibit 8, reinstate master plan development in the Route 1 corridor to be consistent with the comprehensive plan as described in Exhibit 9, and change LDR zone parcels to industrial to allow access to industrial zone parcels as described in Exhibit 10 for a final vote at the January 11, 2021 council meeting.
Counselor Berman has made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Archer. Discussion on the motion that has been read into the record, which is also the suggested motion underneath the closing of the public hearing on page 13 of the packet. Counselor Berman, your hand is up. Did you want to speak on this matter?
I did.
Counselor Berman?
I heard a lot of public commentary and spoke with a lot of people over the last week, or maybe 10 days, especially in regard to the R5 MU district. I understand the concerns. I understand the desire of people to keep their neighborhoods as they are with their current characteristics. I also respect the expertise of city staff, of our legal opinion, the desire to keep the city consistent with our long-range planning documents. Similar to the other suggestions, that these issues can be revisited over the next few months, so can these. If the current project doesn't go through, we'll have plenty of time to revisit the zoning of this and other issues. So I support these changes.
Thank you, Counselor Berman. Any other comments? I do just want to point out for the record that nobody is disregarding the good, hard work of the many constituents who sat on boards and committees. I can remember back to a time when the planning board voted no on Convenient MD, but the council approved it, because the council, as the governing body, thought it was the better of the things to do, but the planning board, you know, had said no on that. So, you know, wherever the votes end up, that doesn't negate the good work. that doesn't negate the good work and the hard work of all the constituents that have put forth and efforts. So I would still encourage people to get on boards and committees and that help advise the city council and advise other boards on how to move forward. And, you know, just, I don't see it as totally negating the good work that has been done. So I do just want to put that on the record. With that, any council, further council comment? A roll call vote on this, on this suggested motion by Councilor Berman, second by Councilor Archer. Councilor Archer.
As this is not the final vote, yes.
Councilor Purdy.
Yes.
Councilor Gunn.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Minthor.
Yes.
Councilor McPhail.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
No.
Motion passes six-one. That moves us on to item B of the agenda, which is tabled on December 14th, 2020, Boards and Committee Liaison Appointments, page 2345 of the packet. And at this time, is there a motion to untable this matter?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to untable was made by Councilor Purdy. Second by Councilor Minthor. Roll call vote, Councilor Archer.
Aye.
Councilor Purdy.
Yes.
Councilor Gunn.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Minthor.
Yes.
Councilor McPhail.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes.
Motion passes seven-zero. We now have the previous document, which, which is before you. You did receive a, a legal opinion from Tim Murphy saying that the change in the staggering of the terms really made the council terms, one-year terms, even though there's the anomaly year of the first year where there's no counselor elected and changed. And therefore, the, the document put before you is for the next, the next year to expire on December 6th, 2021. Councilor Minthor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to make an amendment to the document to clarify an omission. You left yourself and Councilor Archer off the Saco-Bitterford Chamber of Commerce. You actually left the chamber out completely. So my amendment is to add both of you back into that role.
Unfortunately, I did make that mistake on this document and actually made the mistake on the previous document as well that was voted on a year ago. So I'll have to make sure that I correct that for the next year.
Very good.
A port of order. We can't amend this because that would be effectively appointing myself. So I do want to stay on it, just to let you all know. But we can't actually amend anything related to your appointment because then it would be putting the appointee pointer as in our purview, which is not correct.
Correct. So there's, there's options here, councilors. You can approve this and we'll put the, we'll put the committee liaisons to the Saco-Bitterford Chamber of Commerce on the consent agenda for next week.
Works for me.
Is Councilor Archer?
Yes, unrelated to the chamber specific, I just wanted to discuss about when we first discussed this couple, December 14th. I had mentioned that we can't bring up under rules of order, that we can't bring this back up. I just want to let you know that that still stands. We are still, we haven't had that the next elected election. So we still fall under that same council. However, I am prepared to vote on this due to some more recent information that I received by our city attorney is that when we voted a year ago, we were voting pretty much, I don't want to call it illegal, but it was improper. We voted for, to confirm appointments for future councils, which we're also not allowed to do. So even though we can't bring up old items that have been passed, because there was an improper vote about a year ago, then that is now null and void. So we still now have to correct that, which is what's presented to us now. So from the process perspective, yes, again, we're, we have not had the new elections. So bam, we're still the same council. However, we did make an improper vote, so we need to correct that. And I just wanted to make that public that this is now proper as in we're correcting a mistake in the past.
So at this time, council, is there a council willing to make the motion to approve the mayor appointments as detailed in the document titled Saco City Council Liaison and Appointments Committees for this, well, for January 4th, 2021 through December 6th of 2021? Making sure that the Councilor Purdy, you'll make that motion?
Yes.
Councilor Purdy has made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Gunn. Any discussion on the matter? Councilor Johnston.
Thank you. So I appreciate the review by the city solicitor. There certainly seems to have, to have been some unintended consequences, I guess we'll say, of going to staggered terms that are certainly starting to reveal themselves. You know, this being one of them, obviously, the election issue we just dealt with. I hope future charter changes that are being proposed get this level of review by our legal counsel because to be honest, to go back to those, those changes, obviously, they weren't fully vetted through the entirety of the charter, which is, has led us to this issue. As for the appointments, I mean, three weeks ago, I asked for an explanation as to why I wasn't being reappointed, I guess would be the term, to the planning board liaison. You know, city staff wasn't consulted in that process. The planning board chair wasn't consulted and no basic courtesy was extended to me in a conversation by the mayor. You know, I volunteered for this appointment a year ago. Previous liaisons pretty much ended up there by default because no one else wanted to be there. You know, I'm the longest-serving member on this council body with a special interest in planning and land use. In addition, I bring, you know, decades of knowledge and research about past Saco planning activities to the planning board. You know, previously, these council liaison appointments had always been a collaboration between councilors and mayors. Again, I have no explanation as to why, but certainly this isn't the case this time around. You know, it seems entirely punitive, to be honest. And without an explanation, I have no other, you know, I can't call it anything else. You know, at this point, it's in council's hands. And if you all find this acceptable, then so be it. You know, it really only goes towards shining a light on how this council and mayor has operated the last year. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Johnston. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, a roll call vote on the appointments. Councilor Archer.
Aye.
Councilor Purdy.
Yes.
Councilor Gunn.
Yes.
Councilor Berman.
Yes.
Councilor Minthor.
Yes.
Councilor McPhail.
Yes.
Councilor Johnston.
No.
Motion passes six-one. Thank you very much. Moving on to item C, election of deputy mayor, Councilor Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Article two, section 2.5, Election and Terms, subsection C of the Charter states, "The city council shall elect from its membership a deputy mayor who shall exercise all powers of the mayor during temporary absence or disability of the mayor. In the event of a vacancy in the office of mayor, the deputy mayor shall assume the office of mayor with all the duties and obligations of that office in accordance with provisions of section 2.6/1. Staff naturally does recommend the election of a deputy mayor."
Mr. Mayor, point of order.
Who but Member Johnston? Excuse me, Councilor Johnston.
Thank you. Just prior to any motion being read, I just, I want to point out that this is supposed to be an election by council. I expressed this issue last year. I mean, for a little background, my first term on council, we actually held a secret ballot. And subsequent ones, we've had councilors make actual motions on the floor. To have a motion presented by the mayor or city staff, whoever crafted this, is essentially an appointment by the mayor. So I'm just voicing my, my concern with that as what should be done is a blank statement for who the deputy mayor is being appointed and then a subsequent motion can fill in that name. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Johnston. Councilor Gunn, you were interrupted. Please go ahead and finish your, your statement. I'm fine with leaving the name open for the point, for the point, and then somebody can make a motion. But Councilor Gunn, that's totally up to you as the counselor.
Okay, well, in that case, Mr. Mayor, should I make the motion and just leave it blank? And then to follow Councilor Johnson's suggestion, we should perhaps do a nomination from the floor, then go back to it? Or am I free to continue the motion as is?
It's up, yeah, it's up to you at this moment. You can do either. You're the person making the motion.
Okay, well, in that case, be it ordered that the city council move to reelect Councilor Alan Minthor as deputy mayor of the city of Saco for the term of one year commencing in January 4th, 2021. That's tomorrow, hopefully the date is right there. I move to approve the order.
Second.
Motion's been made by Councilor Gunn, second by Councilor Archer. I would ask that there be a, an amendment so that
Can you repeat? Motion, my, my sound cut out.
Councilor Purdy, the motion was read as it's, as the suggested motion in the packet. It was seconded by Councilor Archer. And the only thing I would ask is that there is amendment made to the timing to make it a one-year or less than a one-year appointment because we're, we're, we're going to be with a new council come December 6th. So if we could end the timing on December 5th, so that the first, first meeting of the new council, they can elect their deputy mayor. So if there's a, if there's an amendment that they would be terming deputy mayor for the city of Saco for the term commencing January 4th, 2021 to December 6th, 2021. Is there a councilor willing to make that amendment? Councilor Gunn? You want to do a friendly amendment on that?
I will do a friendly amendment on that to clarify the length of the term.
Thank you. Councilor Archer, are you amenable to that as you are the second?
Yes, that's fine.
Thank you very much. Discussion, Council Archer? You have your hand up. I didn't know if you were
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I was trying to find the mute button. So I just wanted to bring it forward again, just make it public so that there's transparency. I actually, using my old logic of what happened with the council appointments, applying it here, I actually, it was my understanding that Councilor Minthor would have remained. However, it was made improper, so I'm applying the same principle here and I will be voting because it's under the same principle as the last motion. So just wanted to make it public so, and transparent.
Thank you, Council Archer. Any further discussion? Seeing no discussion, no councilors seeking recognition, roll call vote on the reelection of Alan Minthor as deputy mayor.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. Don't we have to vote first on the friendly amendment? Or does that, or is that automatically invoked now that we, it's been seconded?
The friendly amendment usually just falls into the actual amendment because it's not, there's no objection to it.
Just to be clear. Thank you.
Councilor Johnston.
Yes, thank you. I would actually like to offer an amendment. I've given this, you know, some thought, particularly in respects to what former Councilor Copeland said about, you know, that this body needing to be representative of, you know, the people of the city. And currently, you know, we have one female that sits here on this board or committee, whatever. And so I guess, I guess I'd like to nominate Councilor Jody McPhail to be deputy mayor.
Councilor Johnston, that, that's not, at this moment in time, we're not taking nominations. There's a motion on the table that's been nominated, it's been made, it's been seconded. We're at the point where we're having discussion on a roll call vote.
Mr. Mayor, I can amend the motion.
Are you amending it to remove Councilor Minthor and replace it with Councilor
Amending the main motion.
Jody McPhail?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, point of order. This seems to be something that I ran into during the appointment of the new counselor, though, when I attempted to, you know, offer my own motion for my preferred candidate. And I was told that I couldn't make the motion. So to make a, to change the motion to a different candidate before we vote on the motion, which has been seconded, I don't think that's proper.
So there, there can be an amendment and his amendment is to remove Councilor Minthor and put in Councilor McPhail. And that is an amendment, it's not a, it's not a new motion.
But that was what I was attempting to do a couple of weeks ago. And I was told on the floor that I couldn't do that. So I don't see how that's proper.
I'd have to go back and look at the tape. I don't remember where we were at that point when that happened.
I, okay, well, you can take my word for it, though. So I don't see this as how this is a proper, a proper thing, considering doing one for
It's, it's
You did something different for him than did something, you know, it's, I just don't see this as a, we should vote on the motion that I've already offered. And if it's voted down, then we can take up Councilor Johnson's suggestion because it'd be a new motion.
Yeah, under Robert's rules, this is not a nomination process. This is, you've made the motion, he can make an amendment. And the amendment is to remove Councilor Minthor and place in Councilor McPhail. And we vote on that amendment and then back to the main motion.
All right.
Council Archer.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just speaking on behalf, I'm the one who brought it up when Councilor Gunn presented it. And I just wanted to offer my interpretation of what happened at that same time, just so Councilor Gunn is aware. You had presented it as a motion and that's when I applied Robert's rules because you can't make another emotion when it was already there. I think this is just Nate, Councilor Johnston applied it as an amendment and that's the major difference. After hearing you, I think that the amendment wasn't discussed at all. From even my perspective, when I was thinking of when you made that motion, I just want to let you know that that's why there's a difference is because you made it as a motion
motion and we didn't, it didn't even click with me to say, hey, that's an amendment. Counselor Johnston, who's been here many years, kind of unders, I understood that you can make the most, uh, amendment, my apologies. Um, I just thought I could clarify a little bit for you.
I, I appreciate that, uh, Counselor Archer though, but I, and it's unfortunate that, I mean, only one year on the council, start learning the ropes of the particulars that I misspoke and it was interpreted literally, um, because I, it's, again, I feel like it's a double standard in this case, so I, I appreciate your explanation. Thank you.
Is there a second to Counselor Johnston's, uh, Counselor Johnston's amendment?
Second for discussion. We haven't even heard from the counselor being discussed.
Well, there's two counselors being discussed, uh, realistically.
My apologies.
And so, uh, you know.
Being discussed.
But the amended takes preference.
The amended motion, in a process wise, the motion has to take preference. Uh, the motion takes preference, the amendment now takes press preference, uh, and there has to be a second on the amendment, which you have now seconded, so now we take up the amendment. And the amendment is to, uh, just so everyone's clear, it's to remove Counselor Menthorn and put in Counselor McPhail. Uh, so on the amendment only, uh, Counselor McPhail has her hand up. Uh, Counselor McPhail, are you, uh?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, although I appreciate the nomination and would be honored to, um, serve in that capacity, at this time, I am going to ask that the motion be withdrawn because unfortunately at this time, my work would not allow me to, um, put in the time commitments.
Thank you, Counselor McPhail. Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Uh, I completely understand that and I, you know, this kind of came to me earlier today when I was thinking about this. Um, I mean, specifically, it's just to my knowledge, I don't think we've ever had a deputy mayor or, or mayor that's female in the city of Saco. And, and I just, I, I thought that, you know, having everybody have a, have a go at it is, is a good learning experience. So, um, I, I will withdraw my motion.
Thank you. And Counselor Archer, you'll withdraw your second?
Same.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Gunn, we're back to the main motion now. Uh, the main motion has read into the record. Any discussion on it?
No.
A roll call vote on the main motion? Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Menthorn?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much, everyone. Uh, at this time, we are at item D, a first reading of the transit oriented omnibus TIF district, uh, which is page three forty-eight in the packet and assigned to Counselor Purdy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I turned off my video, I'm having internet connections and I, I can at least listen. Um.
Is somebody, uh, else willing to read the packet, uh, read the motion, uh, for Counselor Purdy? Counselor Menthorn? Counselor Purdy, are you okay with, uh, with us going to a different counselor to, for your technical issues?
That's fine with me, yes.
Thank you. Counselor Menthorn?
Thank you. Over the past several months, the planning and economic development department has been working to develop a transit oriented omnibus tax incremental financing district for your consideration. Establishing this new TIF district in the city has been under consideration by the Economic Development Commission and City Council. As the nine active TIF districts across the city have demonstrated for many years, these districts enable more of our tax dollars to remain in Saco. The city's TIFs districts have funded and promoted economic development initiatives, public infrastructure improvements, bond payments and other projects. Staff presented the proposed concept for the TIF oriented omnibus TIF district to the city council on November thirtieth, 2020. The council was supportive and requested that parcels along the Camp Ellis trolley route be added to the district. These parcels have been added to the district and on December fourteenth, 2020, the Economic Development Commission unanimously voted to recommend the city council approve the transit oriented omnibus municipal development and tax increment financing district and development program in substantially the form presented here too. Staff supports establishing the transit oriented omnibus municipal development and tax increment financing district and development program and recommends the city council approve the first reading and schedule a public hearing for January twenty-fifth, 2021. I move to approve the first reading and schedule a public hearing for January twenty-fifth, 2021 on the order included at exhibit G of the development program regarding to, regarding the approval of the transit oriented omnibus municipal dis, development and tax increment financing district and development program in substantially the form presented here too.
Thank you, Counselor Menthorn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor McPhail. Any discussion on the first reading of the transit oriented omnibus TIF district? Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. Um, so, uh, what, several weeks ago, I think this first appeared and, you know, I, I listened, um, as I usually do when, you know, these items are first introduced and try to take it all in. Um, you know, I had some concerns at that point. I think it was relatively late at night, if I remember correctly. Um, but, you know, I've had more time to think about this and obviously we've added additional acreage. And, I mean, we're, we're almost doubling the TIF land in Saco, or at least the acreage amount, um, that we currently have. Um, you know, this is, this is thirty years, thirty years of this, you know, um, district existing. Um, and I, and I've said this several times previously with TIFs, you know, we always hear about how great TIFs are, or, you know, all the good things they can do. And, and they certainly can do, you know, all of those. Uh, you know, I think that, when I think back to seven years ago and I, and I first sat on council or even prior to that, I was just a, you know, bystander watching this process. Um, I always, I had an issue at that time with, with the millions of dollars that used to just sit in TIF accounts. Uh, and, and, you know, the uses were, were rather minimal, you know, and obviously we've done a lot to, uh, increase those uses, but at the end of the day, those uses are still relatively small in comparison to what we spend in the city. Um, and so the concern I have is that, again, we're, we're redirecting monies, tax revenues from the general fund and into these TIF accounts. Uh, I'd like to think that future councils are, you know, as cognizant as I myself am when it comes to reviewing these budgets, but they have a habit, at least from, you know, my own research or, or watching over other communities and Saco of, of becoming kind of like, I don't want to call them luxury funds, but in a way that's it. So it's like, you know, we, we can fund trails. I love trails just like everybody else. We can fund a new public facility, but at the end of the day, we can't fund schools. So we continually funnel money away from the school department and I, and I get the whole sheltering of tax revenue here. But at the end of the day, this is less money, even if it's reduced by the state revenue sharing, um, formula that is available to the school department. Um, and we all know the challenges they've had funding the schools, whether it's, you know, actual school construction, and that's really another issue here. Even though we may get funded through the state, we don't know how, the total amount they're actually going to fund. We don't know the total amount that we're going to actually look to, to fund. You know, they, they might fund sixty-five million. We might be looking for a hundred million. Regardless, the totality, that total amount has to go to bond. It's not the state pays it. We bond it, they, uh, administer that money through the state revenue sharing program. So, I mean, there's, there's a, a large bond out there looming. Um, so, I mean, that's, that's a concern and I'm just, I just have concerns overall about, you know, we've got ten, I guess it is, ten TIF districts. It's not in proportion to surrounding neighborhoods. Um, and again, I'm not, I'm certainly not opposed to them. There's, there's been tests that I've wholeheartedly supported, uh, specifically when they were, we could actually place, um, real concrete evidence that they're creating jobs, for example. You know, if this specifically was just transportation, which is what's in the name, yet many of the uses in here have nothing to do with transportation. Um, so that, again, is concerning to me, uh, because I, I don't, I mean, the downtown district already funds transportation needs as far as if we need to buy additional buses for the shuttle bus or, or what have you. Um, and then the other concern I have in, in that regards is, so if the city of Saco's creating this TIF district and, and then we're generating revenues to go towards transportation, you know, i.e. the shuttle bus, um, are subsequent, are, are partners in this, OOB and Bitifert, are they going to participate equally going forward? Or we just going to create a TIF fund and then funnel five hundred thousand dollars, we'll just say, out to the shuttle bus? Um, so again, that, that's concerning to me, but I don't know. I mean, it's, it's early in the process and, and perhaps, I just look at, I look at the acreage. I look at some of these parcels and many of these parcels are out on the Portland Road and they lay vacant today. We have assessments of three hundred thousand dollars on forty acre parcel. You know, realistically, that acreage could easily support, certainly under the zoning that, you know, council looks to be moving forward, you could be talking about, you know, a hundred million project, a hundred million dollar project on there and a hundred percent of that, uh, tax revenue is now being funneled into, or that new incremental revenue is being funneled into this TIF account. And the, the three hundred thousand is, is, is what's left for the actual, uh, general fund. Um, again, I just think when you take a more in-depth look at, at the parcels of what could be on there, you could have a really robust TIF account, which is good and obviously we can spend it, you know, on those projects, but, you know, you, again, you can't, you can't pay city staff outside of the economic development and several other positions and you can't pay for the school department. So I have a concern that we're going to be passing that burden onto the existing, uh, you know, taxpayers and future taxpayers, not in those TIF districts. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Johnston. Counselor Menthorn?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, could we have Director Clavett, please explain the operations of a TIF district? Because after what I just heard, we obviously need more education.
Thank you, Counselor Menthorn. Planning and economic development director, Clavett.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Um, a couple of things, um, I, I mean, I, I didn't take notes, but just for, uh, clarification as, as the actual TIF revenue that comes in, it's actually to the schools, um, to actually have a lower valuation in a community. So for example, whatever you shelter, you will, it will, the schools are actually going to get a higher amount of revenue sharing in school funding formula, um, calculations. So that's one. Um, two is the development program that exists, the reason why it is as comprehensive, even it's called the transit oriented TIF district, it's comprehensive so that you can fund varying, um, elements. Um, at some point, you're going to have to deal with the pier, you're going to have to deal with, uh, is, issues at Camp Ellis, that's able to be funded. At some point, you may decide to shift a hundred percent of the economic development salaries and, 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 um, what have you, in whether it's in that TIF district or another. Um, and the other piece is that, you know, the current calculations is the city loses fifty percent of its, uh, newly, uh, generated tax revenue. We're very, very careful to, to isolate parcels that were undeveloped. They're pretty much land, uh, valuation, so unless there's a new business, um, that will, and then if you take a look at Camp Ellis, the majority of that is actually on, is, is that actually has zero valuation right now because it's, it's publicly owned land. Um, so, I, I mean, I, I understand, Counselor Johnston, where you're coming from. Um, and, and, and just setting up a TIF district right now doesn't mean you can't amend that ten years down the road and decide that you would wrap it, like, for example, say ten years down the road, this is hypothetical, um, calculations are such that the city ends up losing only twenty percent, then you, you close the district down, you, you, you basically remove parcels. You can do all of that at any point in time. This is not designed to be a credit enhancement agreement type of process. It's more designed to be capitalizing and using it for transit, but also using it for other purposes. Uh, to your point about concerns about being a disproportionate share toward BSO OB, for example, that is not the intention of this. It's going to end up with the same agreement, whatever commitment, instead of taking it out of the general fund, we're basically paying the, a bad amount out of the transit TIF district. For example, if we get an assessment of two hundred thousand as our share from Saco, we would have to, if we're not paying it, generate four hundred thousand dollars worth of general tax revenue to pay a two hundred thousand dollar bill. And so it behooves us to take a look at, at, at TIFs in that, um, that fashion. Um, and I hear you about the schools and the school bond, the other piece of this transit will be able to do as lo, as well as other TIF districts. The more you have, the more you can pay a proportionate share of the bond for the sewer district upgrade. And that, you're going to be facing that bond in the near future at some point, um, in two to three, potentially four years. Um, that can be paid out of the, uh, variety of, of the di, different TIF districts. And so we've designed these development programs to be all encompassing so that they can pay for a, um, a very high proportion of general fund expenses that would otherwise be in a general fund. Is there any, was there anything else, Counselor Menthorn, that you wanted me to address on that?
Director Clavett?
If I might, Mayor.
Counselor Menthorn, go ahead.
Yeah, the land calculation for the other TIFs, the transit TIF land does not get counted in that same calculation.
That is correct.
So it doesn't count against the total maximum that Counselor Johnston was alluding to. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Menthorn. Uh, Denise, didn't we, uh, back in twenty nineteen, uh, when you first got here, we, we kind of redid all the, uh, all the TIFs, correct? To make them all, uh, have the similar or uniform or consistent, uh, uses? And that is the same thing that you're trying to do with this TIF, this TIF district as well, right? Make those same uniform, consistent, um, uses so that all the districts can fund pretty much anything we can, uh, out of the TIF districts. Is that, is that correct?
That is correct. And Jessa worked on the development program, our, um, TIF attorney, Shawna Cook Mueller, and then she was very careful and specifically added some transit oriented language that would encompass what's going on in Camp Ellis and some transit oriented type projects as well. So that, there are a couple, three items that are, are just a tad different than the majority of the rest of the programs.
Thank you, Director Clavett. Counselor Johnston?
Thank you. I wasn't alluding to the percentage cap. Um, it's, it's widely known that, that downtown and, and TIF or, uh, transportation TIFs don't count towards it. I'm counting, I'm talking about the total acreage that exists in TIFs, regardless of the state's maximum. I'm looking at what's potential to be there. And again, as I, I just used as an example, you have a lot that's currently assessed because it's vacant land for three hundred thousand dollars, but it's forty acres and it's more than likely, given that it's on the Portland Road, you know, to be developed in the near future, over at least the next thirty years. Um, you're now talking about all of that new incremental value. So if you, if you did a hundred million dollar project, all that new incremental value of that hundred million dollar project is being, again, not put towards general fund, but put into this TIF fund, which, and I'm not arguing what we can use the uses for, they're clear. And again, I, nothing wrong with them. It's just they end up being rather luxury in several cases here. I mean, I'd like sidewalks everywhere too. And so, you know, when you have these uses and these funds that sit there and the monies that sit there, you start using that money towards, you know, the uses that are before you. Um, and, and even with the sheltering, and I understand the formula, I've been doing this a while, but ultimately, at the end of the day, even if you only had fifty percent, that's fifty percent, that's no longer going to the school department, it's just going to, you know, in this case, it's going to the TIFs. So I, I just, I have concerns and, you know, I've said this before and I'll probably continue to say this, but I just, I think it needs to be stated publicly. Um, you know, I don't know if I'll be here in, in ten or fifteen years, uh, but I just really see a, a, a potential issue moving forward, considering our largest. Uh, but I just really see a, a, a potential issue moving forward, considering our largest um, part of our budget is our school department. And I, I don't really want to continue this nickeling timing that we've done for at least the seven years I've been here.
Thank you, Councilor Johnston. Any further discussion? Councilor Minton.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Denise, as far as the budget on this TIF goes and, and the numbers that Councilor Johnston has presented, um, the fact that this TIF doesn't get calculated in the average, um, the fact that by making this a comprehensive TIF, it in effect, if it does become cash rich, we could offset the other nine districts with monies in this district, thereby freeing those TIF dollars up for uses that are exclusive to those TIFs that this couldn't be used for. Is that correct?
Um, that's, that's part of the solution. Um, the other piece is, and I, I think I would have to ask Jessa. I don't know if we were able to successfully build a portability clause to actually funnel into the downtown. That's an option that we can actually take a look at, uh, for some of, some of these options, but, um, it, I mean, the bottom line is, at any point in time, it is the council's decision on an annual basis of what to fund in those program areas. And so if, if, if the TIF district is going to fund all of these, you, as a council, have control over making sure that it isn't uh frivolous or luxury expenditures, that it actually covers something that would have otherwise been in the general fund. For example, uh, funding the, the road to the Public Works Building and building that, you funneled one point eight million. You would have needed three point six million of general fund dollars to fund one point eight million of the, that project. And so these are very, very important tools that you can use. I mean, that, that's entirely up to you how you want to use it. Uh, but for example, as we start looking at the bond, let's say the bond is, we can pay a certain percentage of the bond for the sewer upgrades, um, sewer district upgrades, um, let's just, that it can only fund a proportion amount of like four hundred thousand a year out of any one of those districts. If, that you would have to generate eight hundred thousand of general fund revenue to pay four hundred thousand dollars. So these are the, the, these are the things you want to be looking at. You don't want to be funding, you're, you're absolutely right, Councilor Johnson. You don't want sidewalks everywhere. You don't want to fund all of these. We just have them in that area so that at some point in time, we need that. We don't need to amend the district in order to be able to fund additional expenditures. So, and at any point in time, you can close that district. I mean, what you can't do is engage in a credit enhancement agreement and, and commit a twenty-year credit enhancement agreement and then close the district down. Um, you can actually make those changes as you go along and decide to close it.
Thank you, Director Clavett. Any further questions on Transit Oriented Omnibus TIF District? A roll call vote on the first reading. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Minton?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. We are now at item E, second and final reading amendments to chapter two eleven. Counselor Gunn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As part of the implementation of, for the new online parking ticket and permit software, the police department identified that parking fees were entered into ordinance and conflicted with the approved fee schedule. This revision reserves council authority to levy fines for parking violations that leaves the specific amounts to the fee schedule, which is approved by council annually. The punitive late fine, which is double the ticket amount if not paid within five days, is also removed and reserved instead of the fee schedule. Some other revisions have also been made to designate municipal parking lots throughout the city and to enable the changes to parking permits that will take effect on January first, twenty twenty-one. Public Works, uh, police and the city solicitor have all been given a chance to review and add their edits. Be it ordered that the city council approve the second and final reading of the amendments to chapter two eleven. And furthermore, be it ordered that the city council approve the updates made to the fee schedule.
Motion's been made by Counselor Gunn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Minton. Uh, discussion, Counselor Gunn, I believe you have an amendment you'd like to offer, uh, that you offered previously, but it did not get into the record, uh, and that is, uh, section two eleven nineteen?
Uh, it's, uh, section twenty-nine, Mr. Mayor. Um, it's, it has the, it has the effect of being a stylistic change, but at the same time, just one I found curious. Um, under section twenty-nine, the, uh, where they discuss parades and basically it's twenty, uh, twenty people or less unless there is a, um, permit from the city, with the exception of the military forces, you know, for parades for Memorial Day, Veterans Day, what have you. I assume that's the intent. For some reason, uh, they list the Army, Navy and Air Force, comma, and then go on to the military forces of the state and they omit, um, the other branches of the military, which I think is, again, probably not intentional, but slightly disrespectful considering we have men and women that serve in those other branches. So I thought for a, uh, amendment to stylistically just change the sentence to uh, the military forces of the nation and state, comma, the rest of the sentence. That way it covers everybody and it's not as wordy as having to write out Army, Navy, Air Force, Space Force, Coast Guard, et cetera. So my amendment is to simply change the sentence to the military forces of the nation and the state.
Counselor Gunn has made a motion, or has made amendment, uh, to the motion to change section two eleven dash twenty-nine. Uh, on page three eighty-nine of the proposed second and final reading amendments to chapter two eleven. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Minton. Uh, Counselor Archer?
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, just, there is one, uh, word that's all, uh, that includes them all. And you would use uniformed ar- armed services of the United States, um, rather, it, it's just another way to say it, uh, but that one's commonly used. So I'm just suggesting it, not making a motion or anything. Um, but that's another option.
Thank you, Counselor Archer.
Um, Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Gunn.
Uh, since I, I, I'm familiar with the, uh, the term now that I've heard, uh, Counselor Archer say it, though, um, perhaps, um, can I alter my, uh, motion to actually have the proper term there, Uniform Forces of the United States?
And so you would be putting in there that no procession or parade, parade containing twenty or more persons or five or more vehicles, accepting the forces of the uniformed armed services, comma, the military forces of the state, uh, and the forces of the police and fire department?
Subst- substantive, yes, but yes.
Okay. So that is your, that is your amendment and Counselor Minton is the second. You're okay with that?
I'm fine with it.
That change? Okay. So it, everyone, the, the motion has now been, uh, changed and seconded and it is to under two eleven dash twenty-nine on, uh, page three eighty-nine, we're looking at, uh, accepting the forces of the uniformed armed services, comma, the military forces of the state and the forces of the police and fire departments. Okay, everyone's clear with that on the amendment? Any discussion? On the amendment only? No discussion on the amendment. Roll call vote. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Minton?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven, or the amendment passes seven zero. Back to the main motion as amended. Discussion on the main motion. Hearing, no discussion on the main motion as amended. Roll call vote on the main motion as amended. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Minton?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Uh, that brings us to the end of the action item agenda, brings us to agenda item ten, new business. There is no new business. Item eleven, administrative update. City Administrator Kane Rath, do you have an update?
I do, yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, starting with an HR update, our search for a new HR director will resume in the spring. Uh, in the interim, I will continue to fill the, uh, acting HR director role and will also now be supported by our communications director, Emily Roy. Uh, Emily is in the process of receiving her SHRM, uh, certification. It's been a great asset in, uh, supporting us continue to rebuild this department and redirect it in the future. So we also have some more complex matters. We have a, uh, up to ten hours a week consultant who has significant um, municipal specific background, um, which is very helpful in some of the more complex matters, um, involving personnel especially. Uh, an update on our ambulance billing services. Um, as we made out, the city of Saco went out to market with RFP for ambulance billing services in an effort to improve collection rates. Six billing companies submitted proposals and were interviewed as part of the process with two progressing to a final round, uh, interview. The final winner of that process was Quick Med Claims. We selected Quick Med Claims for their depth of experience with EMS billing, knowledge of the unique billing challenges faced by providers, uh, specifically in the state of Maine and for their clear dedication to customer service both for the city of Saco uh, and for the many patients who we provide life-saving services to. Uh, this transition from our current billing provider, which is the town of Freeport, um, to a Quick Med Claims will be completed by the end of January this month. Uh, a reminder, please, uh, forward to me any charter amendments you would like to see. Um, we will be having that on an agenda coming up in the near future. Uh, an announcement, the next, uh, city administrator's open office hours will be held Tuesday, January twenty-sixth from three to five P.M. here at the city hall auditorium. Uh, and of course, all residents, local business owners, um, and others are welcome and encouraged to attend and express their views, thoughts, comments, uh, complaints or anything else they would, they would like to tell me. And lastly, uh, city hall, um, is back open normal hours after the week, uh, following the holidays. Um, I'd like to again thank, uh, our city staff for all their work, but also um, all of you and everyone else, citizens, for their support um, in giving our employees this much needed, uh, recognition after the last, uh, year that we've been through. So thank you, uh, to everyone. Uh, so I have, happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, City Administrator Kane Rath. Uh, any questions from council? Guess that covers it. Moving on to item twelve of the agenda, council discussion and comment. Any discussion in common? Counselor Minton?
Yes, thank you. I want to thank council for their support in the role of deputy mayor again. Uh, I promise this will be the last year. Uh, I'm winding down, not winding up. Uh, secondly, um, I'd like to remind those counselors that were here and some that weren't that, uh, you know, in twenty seventeen, when we went after the charter amendments to go ahead and, and stagger our terms and, and we, we started that discussion then. It took a while to come to fruition. We brought it to fruition um, in eighteen and nineteen. And, uh, there were other amendments at that time that we also tried to move forward, but it was suggested by, uh, the city solicitor to limit those changes to six because we didn't want to encroach on the area of having the residents feel we were really needing a charter commission. So we stopped at that. Uh, for the remainder of Mayor Lovell's term, I had requested numerous times that we bring some of those other charter amendments back for subsequent cycles. And, uh, they never were allowed to bring, come forward. So part of the errors we've had with some of the charter changes is the fact that we weren't able to finish the job. So, uh, I just think it needs to be said that, you know, that there are reasons that we've had some of these issues. It wasn't that they weren't foreseen and, and that we didn't have solutions. It's just that we weren't allowed to bring them forward. So with that, everyone, Happy New Year. I hope twenty twenty-one's much better than twenty twenty has been for many people and stay safe and be well.
Thank you, Counselor Minton. Uh, any further council discussion and comment? Okay, moving on, uh, folks, there's no agenda, executive session tonight. Uh, we do not have all the documents ready to move forward, so, uh, no executive session. Uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Counselor Minton, is there a second?
Second.
Counselor McPhail? Any discussions? Roll call on adjournment. Counselor Archer?
Aye.
Counselor Purdy?
Yes.
Counselor Gunn?
Yes.
Counselor Berman?
Yes.
Counselor Minton?
Yes.
Counselor McPhail?
Yes.
Counselor Johnston?
Yes.
Motion passes seven zero at ten sixteen. Uh, as always, thank you, everybody, for your thoughtful comments, uh, and all the discussion tonight. Uh, be well and stay safe.